Okay, it's six thirty. I'd like to call this meeting to order, verify compliance with open meetings law and adopt the agenda. Can I all stand and pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Next up is presentations. First will be the social emotional learning K through twelve plan with Jackie.
Just to let you know, the presentations that you're seeing are in your folder also, the both presentations tonight and the discussion in case you were, wanted to follow along there instead of on the screen.
All right, so in today's session, hopefully what you'll walk away with is a good understanding of what we need by social and emotional learning and how does that promote success in school and in life? And then what is our plan? What are we currently doing and what do we hope to do in the next couple of years? So, social emotional learning provides a structure and a process for adults and students to develop fundamental emotional and social competencies and experiences. So the kind of our, the competencies that we hope to eventually engage in with students is understand and manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain positive relationships, and make responsible decisions. Probably all things for those of you who have children, things that you hope to ingrain in your kids as, as parents. Within a school setting, it really does a lot to impact the school culture. So you'll see some ties into other areas that we already have started in the district and things that will continue to grow on. So much of what you're gonna see tonight comes from a lot of the research from Castle, which is an organization, and this is what, this is how they spend all of their time is focused on what, how can they work collaboratively for academic, social, and emotional learning? So they're not only engaged with the state of Wisconsin, but they're engaged with states all over our country as well as in the world. So again, in this graphic, it kinda shows some of those core competencies, the self-management, self-awareness, responsible decision-making, the relationship skills, and social awareness. So what, what their research tells us is if we put in place an evidence-based program within our schools, so if we teach all of those competencies along with an environment that is safe and caring for kids, that the short-term outcomes, that there really is a correlation to the engagement and to the commitment that kids have during their, their school days, and that they're engaged in less risky behavior, which again, something that both as parents and educators that we're looking for. And then the long-term outcomes is their studies are showing that that has a greater impact on their success in their school, life, and work, so well beyond their time here at Whitman. So what kind of gains, so you'll see from this that eleven percent gain in academics, so this means that if your school is engaged in evidence-based programming, that we should see an increase in our academics. Fifty-nine percent of the hiring managers surveyed are looking for these skills when they're hiring students or workers. that there is a return on, on the dollars as well as that they're looking at surveying the teachers and looking at those experiences that are there. So for us, our main focus this year is really on preparing our staff. We have elements of social emotional learning when you look at our PBIS programs and things like that, but to really take a K-12 approach, we need to first make sure that our staff all the way from the school board down to eventually in some of the programs, you look at your food service, your custodians, your secretarial staff, even your bus drivers in terms of engaging them in the way that we talk to students and work with them. So this year is really about building that expertise in our capacity. We need to determine what our district-wide vision and plan is. We've done a lot of work already with our pupil services team, and you'll see that in the next slide. We need to continue to look at our professional learning sessions. We've had one in August with our, with all of our staff, but continuing to build on that, aligning our human resources, and then the relationship between our social emotional learning and the other community partnerships in there. So there's lots of things that we can do with outside agencies so that we're meeting the needs of our students. And then from there, once we kind of see where we fall this year, then we can determine what do we do next in schools and classrooms and with our partnerships within the community. So pupil services team is probably where you can see the most drastic change like from, from the start of the school year. Thanks to you guys, we have two additional social workers to that special services team. In that, I showed you in kind of the board memo that, kind of where they went, and hopefully you can see that there's always that partnership. So at Hills Corners, we have a social worker. At Edgerton, we have a school psychologist. So when it comes to evaluations or things that might be specific to their training, there's, there's a, you know, street that goes between Edgerton and Hills Corners, and the two of them can work as a partnership. At the middle school, when the team met and kind of looked at how do we allocate, because we knew that we had one additional person, we decided with all of the changes that occur in middle school and with one school counselor being at the middle school, that that would be the place that we would double up and have a school psych and also a school social worker. And then at the high school, we have a social worker, so that means that the school psych would go between the middle school and the high school when necessary. With that team, so previously, they did meet on a weekly basis, but their focus was purely on special education and evaluations. So now we're meeting on a weekly basis, but our main focus is on what are we doing in the school buildings? What does our implementation look like? What are you struggling with? What's going well? And through that process, we've been able to bring some things out of that, and instead of approaching things from a silo in each building, we're really looking at it from a district perspective. So we have a forum that's come out of there and a way for now every staff member in the district to communicate concerns about students and then have that as a data so that we can look to see, you know, what, what are we seeing? What are the trends? And what is our approach to it? They're all, or at their building level, their team then is alerted when those forums are completed, and then they have a chance to see, okay, who's the best person to, to kind of manage a situation? Is it best for one of the school administrators to be involved, or can the school counselor or the social worker or psychologist handle it? We then are meeting on a monthly basis with the school counselor so that we're looking at that team aspect and kind of again bouncing ideas. And that's something that occurred randomly. There wasn't any systematic structure to it in the past. They will be members of the RTI team at their building, and in most cases, as they're starting their data meetings, they're helping to be a part of that and provide information. That group, last year, the staff members who were here, they completed the mental health first aid training, and we brought that in-house, and so we've been in contact with the person who was our trainer last year, and we'll be bringing that person back in January to not only train our new social workers, but also we have a new administrators and a Dena students at the high school, and then we're collaborating to provide that training also to members of Greenfield and Greendale. So I'll show you. So on the DPI site, the mental health first aid training is one of the things that that they spotlight. So it's a, it's an approach that gives, you know, whoever goes through that training, whether it's, you know, an adult, a family member, but in our, our case, we're looking at school staff, but it provides them with information on signs to look for in students as well as how they might react. And so it's, you know, how to, how to talk, how to ask the right questions, and it is something that we've been able to coordinate as a free training. So it's been very valuable in that sense. The other training that this group is a part of is the trauma-sensitive schools. And again, on the DPI site, I've linked in there, so you have an opportunity, not only learn more about what it means, but also if you want to take a look at any of the modules that are there, they've put a pretty comprehensive list of things together. So from each building, we have a school counselor as well as either a social worker or a school psychologist involved in that training I'm attending. So right now, our, our focus is looking at it from a K-12, and eventually then we'll get down to building level teams and how do we go about implementing this. Trauma-sensitive schools goes side by side with PBIS, so it really looks at the tiers of intervention and what you do. So obviously, in PBIS with the behavioral system, you have your tier one, which is your universal. That's the same approach that the trauma-sensitive school. Tier two, you're getting a little bit more specific, and then tier three is a limited number of kids who have experienced more trauma in their lives. So right now, we know about those things basically either from a student self-reporting or from a parent informing us of an event in a, in a child's life. This will kind of provide us with the opportunity and the lens to look more globally and, and go down versus, you know, reacting, which is kind of the system that we currently live in. Chris, since his counselor is out right now, he is serving as a member, and he was really excited after our first training. So actually, the person who co-authored the modules that you see on the DPI site is actually the person who's providing our training, so it's, it's great information that the group is getting. And then I talked a little bit about this, so really in that focus of building capacity, you know, we started with that August session where we had an opportunity to meet with all staff members and share information. We really need to connect what we do with the social emotional learning with our PBIS and our RTI so that everything is interrelated rather than having all of these systems and people feeling like it's just another thing to do. At our meeting recently, we talked about how do we, even though we're not looking at any real implementation this school year, how do we begin to share information and build capacity of not only our staff members, but also of parents and of kids? So we're working on the creation of some monthly themes so that we are able to, in the connect, share some videos, share some news articles, so that, you know, parents and staff members can begin to think about, you know, how does this relate to me and my own child? We all watched a video at our trauma-sensitive training that we were really excited about and just, you know, showing what happens with the brain and what happens to a child's brain when they have that verbal interaction from adults. And, you know, as a society, we're very in tune to our devices, so, you know, maybe if it just has somebody stop and think about, you know, their interactions with their own child versus, you know, that really severe need that we might also see. So from there, there's some student activities that might come along depending on what that monthly theme is. We have talked with the middle school a little bit about their morning meeting structure and how we might, you know, try and tie in so that again, for the students and for the staff, it's very logical and it all connects together rather than having things happen in isolation. And then looking at what parent presentations that we might make available so that people who want to get that information face-to-face from a presenter has an opportunity to do that. And then the district will be updating the crisis plan, which obviously has some components that relate to social emotional learning. And then lastly, the thing that I wanted to kind of pull out is aligning our human resources. So as we begin this process and, you know, we're educating the people who are here, we want to make sure that as we hire new staff, that we're really making sure that they maybe don't have to have all of that knowledge, but that they have that belief and that they have that understanding so that we can grow from there. We do have some micro-credential offerings that are aligned to the social emotional learning, and we offer some sessions for our new teachers as well as, sorry, tail group? Tail group, the teachers who are kind of running through an overview of all of our, our buckets that we did offer some sessions there.
Are you breaking news here? They were hiring principals?
I read it, too.
Hiring principals, the person making the
That seemed happy about.
And then the last slide has some resources that if it's something of interest to you, again, just taking, DPI is doing an amazing job of putting information out there. You'll see a lot of ties between what DPI has on their page to some of the Castle information. They're working very closely with them. There's a video, you know, he's a neurologist, so it's a little bit dry, but he has some great, you know, graphics of, you know, things that happen to the brain, so that's a really cool one to watch. The first one, the introduction to the, the chapter of a book is something that they had on the Castle website. Again, you know, a little bit more studious than your reading, but had lots of great information, so if you're looking to expand your knowledge, just some things to kind of take a look at. Any other questions or comments?
So right now, teachers, parents bring up observations to you or to someone at the high school or the middle school or
If you're lucky. Yep. In the, in our, in our old system, yeah, that would have definitely have been, you know, you would have been hoping for a student to, you know, come and report to a school counselor, probably to an administrator, something that was occurring in their own life or maybe that of, of a friend. Our social workers and our school sites weren't involved in that process at all. A social worker, a teeny-tiny bit, when we were initiating and saying, hey, we've got this situation, we'd really like your expertise, but for someone who was trying to manage the entire district and, you know, spending the majority of the time case managing for special education, it would take a lot of time for that contact with students. And I think they're all, even the people who have like playground duty and things like that, they are having such a great time with it and making connections with kids that they're, they're, I think, really, I think as skeptical as they were about their role changing, I think they're super excited to see things roll out. And there's a great little boy at the middle school who casually walked by, Mr. Petrie, and said, "Social worker, playground supervisor." And just kept walking. Someone he had had, actually had contact with in elementary school and just kind of made the casual observation, but, you know, really, I mean, if you would have asked the kids, who are these people unless they had been tested or, you know, had that, you know, small experience, they wouldn't have known who they were. And I think in most of the buildings, the kids would be able to identify and know that it's a resource to them now. They've gone and done some presentations and shared in classrooms about how they can be available, so exciting.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Jackie.
You guys got ten minutes because Lisa said seven o'clock.
Okay, so three B is grading, K through twelve.
Socially and emotionally secure.
Yeah.
All right, so we are going to talk a little bit about our current state of grading and reporting in Whitman. And those of you that have been around for a while know that this is sort of the pursuits and the trajectory that we've been on for quite some time now. I was talking to Chris before, I said, you know, I was trying to figure out timelines on, you know, where we've been and where we started and how we got here, like all the way back, kind of predating me. And he said he thought maybe ten years ago is when elementary school started kind of getting a little bit more on the standards-based platform for elementary school. That sounds about right, so I think we've been on a long trajectory, so we're gonna talk a little bit tonight about where we are, where we've been, and how we got here, where we are currently, and where we go next. We hope not to have this be a continual guessing game of, we know something and you have to guess what it is. It's not what this is supposed to be about. We are trying to follow best practice and do what's right for students and what's right by students. So we are going to have some informational sessions upcoming, and I'll talk about those at the end because we're hoping to bring parents and families along on the journey instead of trying to do it for them and then with very little explanation, hope that they understand. So, we are here at this point in time because we really need to continue looking at how we change our system to meet today's learner needs. So if you were on last year, you remember that we saw the most likely to succeed video? We brought families into that, it was a huge community event. We started the discussions there by saying that truly the learners that we have in front of us today don't fit the mold that we have created over years and years and years of the same type of educational systems that we have in place. So we're looking at a hundred and fifty-plus years of this industrial model, started out as an agricultural model, really designed to, you know, have kids in school when they weren't needed at home and then release them back to the home when they weren't needed at home and, and let the school rest for a few months when there was like the summer growing season, all that stuff. And we clearly liked that model so well that we, we know little else at this point. As we are moving down the road of technology increasing and the status of social media and everything just exponentially just growing and growing and growing, it's really been hard to keep up with all of the development, and we're not helping ourselves by keeping the same model of schooling in place as everything around us continues to evolve. So there's a few, a few little graphics up here. One was the most likely to succeed, just that graphic, our school system was designed in eighteen ninety-three, and that was just a little graphic from the movie. And down the line, it says, when students learn differently now than even in the recent past, so even in the last five years, it's changed quite a bit. Workforce and workplace are beginning to look very different from what we currently experience, and it's still evolving, and we're in a conundrum right now of, we're trying to educate students for, we are not quite sure exactly what. By the time they actually get out there, if they're in elementary school now or middle school now, things are changing so quickly, we're not sure what they will face when they leave us. When skills for career in college are changing rapidly, same situation. We really have to take a look at what we are doing and are we doing the best service to all of our students every, every day at any given time? And when the focus needs to be on learning rather than compliance, all of these things together mean that our schools need to adapt. When we say learning versus compliance, I think we've been a little horrified over the years to really realize that we have trained students really well to do what we've asked them to do, to reach a set bar, to say, here's what you need to do to be successful. I'll tell it to you, you do it. I'll tell it to you, you do it. I'll tell it to you, you do it. And what's happened over time is that as the environment has been changing, social media, landscape, career, workplace, all those things are changing, and we have done our students a disservice because we really trained them to be compliant to what we're telling them to do or even asking them to do when we're being nice about it, but they really look to us to say, tell me what to do and I'm happy to do it. Tell me what to do, I'm happy to comply. Tell me what I do to get the A, I'm happy to do it. And what's happening now is they're getting out into the workforce, and the workforce is coming back to schools and saying, we really need people to be think for themselves and not be told what to do and just say, okay, tell me what to do and I'll do it. We need them to think outside the box. We need them to be developers, we need them to be creators, we need them to be initiators. We need them to think of, how do I start a project without being told? And we are not doing that for our students very well. So a lot of what you see in here, when we're talking and really struggling with, how do we grade? How do we report? How do we set students up? How do we personalize their learning so we pull some of those skills out of them? It's all because of what we're being shown and told about the current status of workplace, environment, et cetera. The compliance versus learning thing is huge. You know, we, schools were in that agricultural age, and then the industrial age is really where schools kind of that one model, Thirty Kids March, it developed in Germany, and it's like somebody just said, hey, I know how we can actually get a bunch of kids all through school all at the same time, we'll kind of get this classroom model going. And in the industrial age where we needed people to be very on time, take direction well, in wartime, take direction well, or people are going to be endangered, we really, the compliance model really did us a great service, and we had a good time with it and it served our needs socially. Right now, we need to break away from it because creativity is what's going to sort of rule the day in our, in our lives now. So important in historical environments, this was completely appropriate to what college was demanding, career was demanding, workplace was demanding, and it was fine. Twenty-first century, we've got to break out of it now to meet our creative thinking, inquiry, and questioning skills, needs. Traditionally, we have said, if you can gather some facts, if you can gather pots of knowledge and store them in your brain, at least you can test it on them, and then you're free to forget them as you see fit. That's been how we've done business. You show your learning by showing how much you know in any given moment. As we move through time, now technology has changed that for us. It's no longer a matter of, you know, give us this date of this war or, you know, this time at this place, because we all have these devices where we can say, yeah, I know I learned that in school at some point, give me my device and I can look it up for you. That's not to say we should not be teaching this stuff. We should still be going through it, we should still be exposing students to it. So sometimes we say we're too content-based, and we're really relying too much on rote now, rote memory and rote learning of facts and figures. Some people say, oh, so you're not going to teach them anything, you're just going to say, here, have Google and have at it? That's not what we intend at all. We still want them to have a deep understanding of historical things, of social things, of math, of reading and learning, deep learning. But we also want to acknowledge that to test them on these things and assess them is not really assessing them on their learning anymore. It's really assessing them on a little pile of facts that they may forget a week from now. So we want the deeper learning that's going to stick with them. We don't want to assess them on learning that they cram for a test, cram for a test, take the test, phew, and then six months from now, they can't really remember what the test was really about, but I know I got an A on it. So career in college now demands skills, and you can read the bullet points right now. We really need students to know how to access knowledge, how to acquire it. We need them to be able to determine the validity of their informational sources and resources. So right now, we're really trying to train kids at a young age. Don't, don't take Wikipedia at its word, there's a lot of valuable facts in Wikipedia, there's some truth in Wikipedia, but how do you know what's what? And how do you know what's real? So we do spend quite a bit of time trying to train students to understand what is a reliable website? What is a valid news source? What is the difference between news and that now overused term of fake news? And a lot of times, students will just look up something very quickly, and we as adults do it too, and then we've all done it, we look it up really quick, okay, Wikipedia's quick, okay, okay, I kind of got it. But we really want them to understand they need to be discerning with the information that they do acquire. We want them to question, we want them to be able to problem solve, we want them to be able to critically analyze the information that's being put before them, and we want them to have persistence in the face of uncertainty or failure. All of that compliance model does not necessarily develop great persistence in our kids. It really makes them a bit fragile in the face of failure, actually, so it backfires on us. So the big question is, how do we develop and perpetuate a system which communicates and fosters true learning? A lot of research has said that we kick the natural inquiry out of kids by the time they're in about second grade because they're so used to people telling us what to do and direct us that we have sort of damped down that, that natural inquiry and that natural inquisitiveness that we are all born with. So, that brings us to our grading and reporting systems. This looks like a mess, and it only looks like that because it's kind of a mess. This is our historical context, again, I didn't put actual dates on here, so just figure the last ten-ish years, there have been these iterations and moving, moving pieces. So our grades K through five started working with standards-based type grading scales ten-ish years ago, and kind of looked at having levels to report student success and levels of understanding as opposed to that, you know, points and percentages, and if you get like seven rights out of thirteen problems, what does that mean for your learning? We still cannot really answer that question today. It went through a couple of iterations. It went from four, three- It went from four-three-two-one, and Chris and Laurie, you can jump in here if there's anything else in here. It went from a four-three-two-one scale to the last year or so, an E M P L, which has words attached to the letters. And then, we are currently settled on an E P D B that's going to be new this year. It's bad because it's one more change. It's good because there's a bit more consistency to it, which I'll get to in a second. So, Chris, Laurie, you okay with all those?
We did a three-two-one because we did one for...
Oh, okay.
We started with a three-two-one, but we moved to a two-four.
Okay. So, three-two-one, four-three-two-one, E M P L, E P D B. I kept it up. Okay. So, all these different interpretations, as you can imagine. If you're a parent sitting on the other end of this, you kind of think, "Okay, three-two-one. I see what's associated with three and a two and a one, okay." And then we change it because we're thinking, "Okay, we really need an extra level to reflect some students that might be striving for that level." Okay, now people are looking at numbers, and all of a sudden, every number's turning into a calculation, and it turns into, "Oh, what does that mean? How many points is that? What percentage is it? It's still a number." So, we backpedal and say, "We just want you to have an understanding of the content of a standard, of a learning target, and we just want to be able to say that a level of understanding is here, 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 or here." So hence the E M P L, which was the exceeds-a-target, meets-a-target, progressing-toward-a-target, and limited-progress, which is a lot of words to describe. We kind of ripped off the Elm Brook model and decided this year that we're going to go with E P D B. So if you start from the bottom, you're at the B, which is a beginning level. A D is a developing level. A P is a proficient level, and E is still exceeding the grade-level target that kids are faced with. So, that's going to be all these different iterations. We're hoping to settle on one. The consistency piece is coming up next. So if we move to grades six through twelve, those have all longer than the traditional hundred-point percentage mark scale. So we all know this scale. We all grew up with this scale. We are all very comfortable with, you know, "I got an eighty-two. Yay. I got a B. Yay." So we know how that works, and parents are very comfortable. We're very comfortable, and quite frankly, teachers are very comfortable. The problem with that scale is that when you start trying to get it to translate into, "What does this student really understand within this content?", it's very vague, and it does not really have any good descriptors with it. When I was teaching, I would always say to students, "So, you got an eighty-six. What does that mean?" They'd say, "Well, I got eighty-six percent of the notes right." "No, that's not quite it, but what does eighty-six percent mean?" "Well, I kind of got some of it." "All of it?" "Lot of it." "How much?" "Eighty-six?" So it really could never be a discussion about learning and understanding, unless I learned I had to really rip the numbers and the scores and the letter grades away from what we were doing in the classroom, and just say, "Forget it. Just forget it. Let's just talk about what we're doing." And that would have better rewards because students wouldn't be so bonded with, "Am I doing it? Am I not doing it? Am I doing it right? Am I not doing it right?" It's a risk for kids when they feel like they're being graded and judged every little step of the way. So that's our struggle with that traditional hundred-point percentage scale. Not to mention that there are, you have your ninety to one hundred, your ten points of your A, ten-ish, you have your ten points of your B, your ten points of your C, D, and then fifty points of failure below that. So there's a big, long range of fail before you start incrementally climbing up that scale. So that's our struggle with that one. As we continue to struggle, the middle school started moving, oh, four years ago now? Maybe five? Where the applieds or the electives classes started really saying, "It makes more sense to have these levels in order to be able to communicate with students and parents that we can just say, 'You're at a proficient level, or you're slightly missing that proficient mark because of these things based on our rubric.'" And it became a little bit more of a comfortable discussion with students, kind of gauge their understanding better. They could understand what we were trying to communicate with them as far as feedback in a more cohesive manner. So that group of teachers stuck with that. And then last year, the core teachers said, "Well, it seems to be working well for them. We would like to try it as well." So they jumped in, and so as of last year, all the middle school teachers were kind of grading on a, not kind of, they were grading on a four-three-two-one scale. This year, we're changing that to say E P D B to make us match K five, so now we're going to have some consistency K eight. And we're going to try and keep it there for a while and use those hopefully clearer, more basic, developing, beginning, developing, proficient, and exceeds levels. Took the numbers away again because we're trying not to let things calculate. Doesn't, we don't want it to be a score. We don't want it to be a number. We just want it to be a level of learning that is reflected in the feedback that we're giving to students. Then, we move to the high school. And the high school's tricky, because the high school has a lot more attached to it in the form of stakes and looking at college and career and looking at all of the things that go with a high school transcript. So we have to be careful when we tread here. And historically, we've had, obviously, the traditional scale because that's what works with high school, and that's what we've always known and always done when we look at higher institutions. They are changing themselves at this point, but largely, they are still on that traditional scale, traditional hundred points, et cetera. So that's a challenge. Also, about three, four, five, six years ago, we had some pockets of high school teachers who were equally frustrated with that scale, with that hundred-point scale, and they said, "There's got to be a better way." They started messing around in some of their classes. So we had pockets of social studies and math teachers that started to grade on a standards-based... You notice I start calling it competency-based. We put standards in parentheses up at the top because it's always been standards-based, standards-based, standards-based. Competency-based fits a little bit better. And I saw a video a few weeks ago that some grading guru said, "Please don't ever say to anyone outside of the education world that we're moving to standards-based grading." So someone on the outside's like, "If you have not been standards-based grading, what in the world have you been basing your grading on?" And the guru went, "Yeah, because standards are supposed to drive what we do." So we have our state and national standards, and we follow those. To say that we're moving towards standards-based grading suggests that maybe we don't have any standards on which we are basing our grading. So we don't want to go there and be confusing with that. As we had these pockets of teachers move into those competency-based, standards-based scales, we, too, were trying to find a way. And this past summer, when we had the Teaching and Learning Essentials group, there's a large group of teachers, there's like forty-five teachers that are taking this micro-pension that really investigates all of these six priority areas that Whitman has. And we started having a grading discussion, and we started talking about what happens elementary, pretty easy discussion. What happens middle school, getting a little trickier because we've moved it around a couple of times now. And then we got to the high school, which in my mind, I knew about a couple of pockets, and I knew that was mostly traditional. And then as we're talking, we had one person say, "Well, our department, you know, we've been doing a four-three-two-one." And someone else said, "We actually do a three-two-one." And someone else said, "Well, we do a four-three-two, but we don't really like the one." And then someone else said, "Well, we do a four-three-two-one and a zero." And then someone else said, "We do a five-four-three-two-one." And at this point, it was just like machine gun fire of all these different grading scales, and it was a little bit of a horrifying moment, to be honest. So, we had four or five, six different grading scales at any one time, and to say that it's confusing for students and parents is, that's putting it really lightly and mildly. So we need to clean that up. I did put at the very end of this that all of these iterations, I don't want us to lose the fact that people have been doing this for the absolute right reasons. They're uncomfortable with that traditional grading scale because they feel like it's always sort of something they're trying to manipulate and trying to fit the kid rather than the kid just know the standard and know the learning target. So we are doing it for the right reasons, but we can't have six grading scales. So, the continuous search is because of this. We have state and national standards that have been trying to get schools and teachers to focus on fewer standards. So the old days of, "Here's two-hundred standards. Good luck getting through them between September and June. See you at the end." Those days are trying to be done. So we want fewer standards, but we want more rigor and depth with the standards that we are going to focus on. And with more rigor and depth, we are hoping to attach to those the teaching of critical skills, thinking skills, being able to tap into students' creativity, being able to be an initiator, be a developer, trying to know themselves as learners. So it's trying to turn toward learning as opposed to that just compliance of jumping through a bunch of hoops. The state and national standards are also now focusing on more relevance to real-world application. So teachers are really working toward, "If you're going to learn it in school, let's hook it to why it would be important in real life, and why it would be important to you. And if it's not important to you, what do you value that might have a relationship to this particular content?" And previously, focus was on far-reaching but lower-level learning targets. So new state and national standards are really looking to go, get away from that mile-wide, inch-deep, and cover less surface area, but go deeper with all of the thinking and learning that goes with those selected priority standards. We also have our E S S A, our Every Student Succeeds Act, which is formally No Child Left Behind. And that is pretty explicit in saying, "Schools, you cannot just say to a student, 'Okay, you failed. We're all moving on,'" and not have any kind of reaction to that or any kind of response to that. So we really, really need to say, "Not learning is not an option." It might look different for every student. It might have a different entry-level point. It might have a different exit criteria or exit point. But everyone has got to be able to learn, and everyone's got to be able to proficient these standards that we have chosen to be high-leverage and meaningful to us. All students must reach proficient levels of all grade-level standards. And again, doesn't mean everyone maybe is doing the same thing exactly, but I might decide that Nancy, or Nancy might decide she has a better way of approaching the standard and showing evidence of her learning than Quinn does. So as educators, we need to start learning to really honor that, honor the fact that kids understand themselves as learners, with our guidance, of course, and letting them show their knowledge and understanding through some of their own means. And schools just have to ensure that our system's purpose is to develop talent rather than to merely sort it. That was the other problem with that old industrial model, is that we pitted kids against each other. They competed against each other, and we really just said, "Here, either you can do this, or you can't. If you can't, great, you're moving on. If you can't, I don't know what happens to you next." So we really need to say, "We're not sorting kids for a purpose in life. We're not trying to track them into certain jobs. We are trying to develop every kid's talent individual as it is." Traditional grading system is ineffective as a tool to communicate learning, which is kind of what we have learned all along the way here. Here's a little break from all the words. And...
There, she was on the picture.
So, on your left-hand side, this is kind of where we all came from. You got the old-fashioned red grade book. Actually, I found out there's a couple of those around the district. Highly coveted, and are being held as prize trophies in certain areas of the district. But the old red grade book, and where people like wrote in things, and, you know, did some narratives, and hard copy books, which I still love, and actually, I find that kids still love that, too. They just like the mix of things. And you see the calendar down the bottom left with the four red circles? Those are the times report cards would go home. So, in a day and age where we didn't have continuous information bludgeoning us every ten minutes, that was when you checked in and checked your kid's grade and how's it going? And they got mailed home in a good old-fashioned envelope with a stamp via snail mail. On the right is more us now. We have our K-12 academic standards. We are lining those standards up for students. We are picking high-leverage and priority standards to make sure that we really are going in-depth with the standards that we are expecting kids to be able to perform. We have our Infinite Campus Portal, and that's open all the time. So twenty-four-seven, you wake up in the middle of the night, you have a nurse to get your Infinite Campus fixed, you as a parent can go on there and access Infinite Campus and scope out grades at two in the morning if you like. And then, of course, we have all of our lovely devices down there, which you can use twenty-four-seven. There's a big paradigm shift that is happening. We are moving from traditional grading practices to a more competency-based system. So we have, down the left-hand side, these are all the things that we have historically done, and then we are moving them over to a more competency-based system. So we used to track grades by assessments, meaning like tests and quizzes and homework and the like. So what we are trying to do now is move from that, instead of just saying, "Here's some quizzes, here's a homework, here's a worksheet. I'm just going to see if you can spit this back to me." We really want to be able to say to students, "Here's the standard. Here's the learning target that goes with this. This is what it looks like to be successful with this learning target. Here's the success criteria. How would you like to go about doing this?" Or, "I, the teacher, have some ideas, you know, and so here are my ideas that you could go about to have your evidence come forward with your learning, or you could show your own learning. You could pick a path." There's all kinds of ways, as we start to personalize, that we can get at that. We used to grade academic behavior and academic performance. By academic behavior, we're not talking about the kids sitting in the back being naughty. We're talking about things like not turning in assignments on time. We're talking about, you know, late work. We're talking about not turning in the work at all. So we, as teachers, have to really figure out, what is the actual understanding? How do we grade the level of understanding without getting tangled up in there, "Well, you only get fifty percent on this because it was two weeks late." Well, now, we really said, "You get fifty percent, but you knew the stuff." So if Nancy turned in something to me, and it was like high-quality work, but it was two weeks late, and now I've cut her grade down because of the deadline disorder that Nancy has, I've graded her deadline disorder, but I've not graded the quality of her work or her understanding in that content area. So we're really getting teachers to try and think about, a zero, does a zero mean the kid does not understand, and that's what we're reporting? Or does a zero mean that something was not there? Or does the zero mean that there's no more chances? We really have to be very cognizant of how we are reporting that learning or not. Last word list. Last word list. Oh, including all quiz, tests, grades in a term grade. So every grade that you had, you get a bunch of grades, average them all together, there's your grade. So you could start off a class, and you could be not understanding at all, and you could be getting Ds and Cs and Ds and Cs, and then as you gain some understanding, you could maybe pull a couple of Bs, and a few more Bs, and a C, and a B, and an A. At the end of that, the average comes back to say, "You averaged from point A to point B. You're getting Ds, you're getting As, you get a C or a B, depending on how the points line up." That's not really an accurate reflection of the learning that's going on. It's taken all this learning and kind of dishonored this part of it and said, "Well, it's not fair that we honor you for this when you had all this down here, so we'll settle somewhere in that middle on the average." Not really a fair assessment of a student's learning, so we're also trying to walk away from that. Relying on math to determine a term grade, this is why you find teachers trying to walk away from this system, because the mathematical equation is not really a good determinant of learning. So we're trying to use that standardized grading protocol to determine a term grade, including a teacher's professional discretion. And part of what we struggle with is that teachers feel so bound up about, they really need to have evidence of how a student has done in the classroom, that sometimes we're like, "Okay, we got to make sure that the numbers work out to accurately reflect what the student has done in a class." And a lot of times, that really means that we're tweaking that system anyway. It's not pure math anymore anyhow, or it's extra math, however you want to look at that. So we really want to get away from saying, "Okay, we're going to just make mathematical formulas, and the mathematical formula, the sum or whatever it's going to be, is going to determine what you get as a grade to reflect your learning." Basing grades on percent of material mastered, we'd like to walk away from that. We want to base grades on quality of student performance relative to those benchmarks or standards. And developing, maintaining learning units which focus on recall or production of content, we talked about that earlier. If you want to recall something, you really can go and just look it up on-demand now. So the high-leverage testing assessments should not be falling there at all. And administering a cumulative high-stakes final exam at the end of a grading term, we'd rather base a student's course grade on evidence of most recent learning. One of the best analogies that we have heard over time is that when you think of a summative, you think of a summative exam as being a final exam. So if you take it as going to the doctor, and you go over here for a physical exam, you go for a physical, the doctor checks you out, the doctor says, "You're in great health. See you next year." Or the doctor says, "Hey, there's something a little bit wrong here. We need to fix this. We need to move on. So think of a formative assessment or ongoing assessment as your physical exam and your checkup. A summative is like your autopsy. We can find out what was wrong with you, but there ain't no going back. So that summative assessment really is the end of the road for a student in a particular class. So we are trying not to perform the autopsy on students because there's really no more point. You can say to a student at the end, this is what you did at the end. But if we didn't have a lot of opportunity to really make it to where we need that student to be, we're seeing less and less value in that summative autopsy.
Wouldn't it show deeper learning if the testing was on the whole year? Right there?
Show deeper learning?
The very last, what you just said. We talked earlier about deeper learning and only knowing facts for two weeks and then forgetting it. But if you test them for, like the administrative high-stakes final exam at the end of the grade for the whole year, wouldn't by testing for that for the whole year's learning, wouldn't it show deeper learning as opposed to the last recent learning?
It depends on how you're going to approach it. So when we say summative, high-stakes final exam, we're talking about the situation where we're putting kids in a position where they're going along, they're doing some studying, they're doing some worksheets, they're doing some stuff. And without enough feedback and formative work in there to really inform students with how well they're doing and giving them time to kind of go back and correct as they go, if we don't have that built in there, then that summative ends up being a surprise to some students if they haven't had a lot of the formative work along the way. So when we say summative, we just don't want kids going along, going along, going along, going along. And all of a sudden, there's this summative exam and that was their only opportunity to really show that learning and now there's no one backwards. So you're right, if they can take a summative exam and they've had enough of the formative work along the way, they could show a bigger, longer trajectory of learning. We just wanna make sure that that is not the only way students are showing their learning because what if they can't show it there? Then what happens?
Can I answer that, too?
Sure.
You want a piece of it, too, huh?
I do want to answer that. So the other part of it is, is that the typical way we've been doing cumulative summative exams have been in recall only. So I would say in a project-based learning class, and the area that I used to teach was that way. So I would say the best way to do something at the end of a semester is a project, to be able to apply it. But that's on a deeper level. So it has to be very intentional at the end of a semester. So for anybody who's taught that piece of it, to have a cumulative project or a music teacher, whatever, at a concert at the end, that is summative and cumulative. And I think those are the place for it. But if it's just recall and regurgitation at the end of it to be able to do that, then I would say then there's not deeper learning. So there's a way of intentionally applying deeper learning in a cumulative. And we would support fully taking that and applying it to their learning at the very end of it. That's not always the way that we've been historically doing a cumulative semester exam. It's been a bubble in on a Scantron sheet. And that's why I would say it's basically recall, regurgitate.
And how's it help them on a high-stakes ACT test? How's that help?
I would say that's not the same as a course summative multiple choice exam. The ACT is written as a way of, they are written in a way that is asked to apply it if you've actually studied the ACT. It's not just regurgitation and recall on it. So they intentionally ask, so don't confuse multiple choice questions with just recall and regurgitate. There's a way of asking a multiple choice question that actually gets a deeper learning. Historically, we've not been really great at that in our classrooms in offering that type of cumulative semester exam, if you will.
So I guess what I'm getting to is, so we go by these standards. We go by this program. But then when they go and they test and try and get into a college and have to have a grade point average and can't say I have a five or a four or whatever it may be, how does this translate to the real world?
Yeah, she's getting, she got a little excited.
So I wanted to ask you a question about the, when you talked about the grading academic behavior versus academic performance. So if you're grading only on the project or the paper or whatever that's getting turned in, but it's been turned in two weeks late, so what are you teaching the student then about timeliness of projects?
We need to teach them about timeliness of projects, but we don't even tie that into the learning rate. So we don't want that confused with, did they understand the content or not? There's all kinds of things that teachers could put in place. You know, I can go to Jackie, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna hold your hand until you get this in. And Jackie might not like it, but I'm gonna talk to Jackie about that timeliness. But we don't think that that score should be the thing to be teaching them. We need to teach them. And as a collective community, we need to be teaching them about that. But that should not be messed up with their learning grade. We want the learning grade to be very clear, did they understand the content or not? Not do they have a deadline disorder or not? We have to deal with the deadline disorder in a different way.
Ooh, can I? So we are working on, once we get this mastered, doing a companion grade. And most districts who have this done well will have an academic learning grade and what you might wanna call life skills grade, deadlines, all of that other stuff. So that has to come next because it's equally as important. The problem is, is that when you average the academic score with the behavior score, so I'm at a C because I have, as Lynn calls it, a deadline disorder. But I know the content at an A level. I have a B. What does a B represent now? My learning or my behaviors? So what you have to do is you have to report both of them, but you have to report them separately. So as a parent, some districts call it citizenship, some call it life skills, some call it whatever it is. If my child under the academic skills has As for lack of anything else and the life skills, group discussion, participating, bringing supplies to class, all of that stuff that you want, they have a D, I clearly now have some issues in terms of, I know what the issue is. If I would've taken all of those and averages those together, my child now has a B minus. What is that telling me? So the next phase, what we have to do here is to separate out because you can't ignore those other traits. They are equally important, both in college and career. That's the next phase that we have to be able to do is allow teachers to report those out in terms of behaviors because those are just as important.
Does that get reported to colleges or how would that work?
Yes, yep, so absolutely they can. So in some districts, they actually have, they do a, so in terms of privileges that are earned in schools that they have to have, so they don't, they are in an assigned area or privileges that are allowed to them. They don't get in their senior year certain privileges unless they have some behaviors in that.
But I guess more or less, you get an A on all the work, but you turned everything in the last day of class. So are you getting an A reported to the University of Wisconsin when you apply?
Right, so here's the deal. At the University of Wisconsin, they don't, my professor does not care if I am sitting there on a daily basis. They are saying how I perform on those tests, correct?
I suppose.
So at the end of the day, if I stop showing up and I don't perform, that's all that's reported at the university right now. They're not saying if it's late or not late. They're just saying you either, you don't in terms of that.
Kevin's talking about getting in to begin with.
Sure, so if we're talking about academic, right, so the learning is if I don't know calculus and that's a requirement for me to get in on the ACT, it's gonna show up on my ACT if I do or don't know calculus.
But I'm saying I could turn everything in late, get the A in the class. It gets reported, you know, I don't get to go homecoming or something because I'm lazy. But I'm still getting an A and I'm still gonna get into college.
But if the A represents your learning and what you know in that subject area, isn't that what colleges?
But is he gonna get an A and a D? An A for what he's learned and a D for his citizenship or something?
It's academics just for the learning.
Well, that's what we asked about, was the grade point.
The grade point is the academic piece of it.
So we're still working on the incentive per se to actually do your things on time?
Well, if you're trying to say, what does a C represent right now? Do you see what I'm saying? Is that if you're trying to say?
I know what you're saying. I understand the learning part. I get that and I'm all about, if you know it, you know it. If you don't learn it to the end, why should you be punished because you couldn't get it right away? I get that. I'm just saying for the students that are turning everything in on time and doing everything in a timely manner, what is their incentive not to, well, I'm gonna do this class, you know, on time. If it's gonna take more time, I'm just gonna hold off on everything else and deal with that at the end of the semester. And then at the same time, how does a teacher deal with, now I've kinda graded stuff from the first part of unit one while I'm working on everything else?
Yeah, no, it's not that extreme when you're talking. But there are absolute deadlines along the way. It's not like I'm gonna wait till the very last day because as you know, in sequential content, you can't just wait till, like it's Spanish or math, there's sequential things that are there. So it's not to that extreme where you can wait 18 weeks to all of a sudden just turn it in in terms of what that is. I mean, there are consequences along the way. It's just a matter of, I think philosophically, for those of us who've been teaching a while, it used to be like, today was a deadline, I'm just gonna do a zero and move on. The problem is, is that now, let's take Algebra I, for example. That happens by some point and the child is sitting there and they got a 12%. They may not be great in algebra, but they can do the math. The likelihood of them passing the rest of the year, so they are now sitting there in a class for the rest of the year, basically they've given up because there is no mathematical way they could ever pass. And so if it's about the learning, you're coming in after school, you're giving up. I mean, when I talk about consequences, those ways of getting the learning, it's not a free-for-all.
I suppose, but it could, so we're allowing it to be more like, like what you kinda said in the college class, where say attendance wouldn't be mandatory and I'll just learn all on my own. I show up and turn everything in, I know it, here you go. I just didn't have time for, to care about the class. That's gonna be all right, but it's gonna become with various other consequences of.
What I'm saying is that we're not doing a very good job of placing a student. If they could do the work already and without it, then they need to be in an advanced court. We're not doing them service if they already knew it before. We're, why are they doing a C test if they already know it is what I would question?
It's a little late to ask that at that point, though, isn't it? It's like a semester.
Well, I'm saying we need to work on a system that accurately places them. And if the teacher's doing their job, they're noticing right off the bat, this child knows that I'm not gonna have him sit and see and wait till the test.
Does that need to be, does that system that needs to be developed need to come before this?
That's the RTI system you're talking about. Remember that diamond that we presented when Lynn was on the phone a couple of months ago about the gifted learner where we're not gonna hold them back? They need to accelerate to the pace where we're not, they're not just watching the clock tick by waiting for the test, but they know it already. Move them along.
We oftentimes, too, do these what-if scenarios with these like weird one-off cases. A kid who can never show up at all, never do any practice and ace everything. We know that doesn't happen on a periodic basis. We know if you don't practice on another basis, you don't get good at something. And so the reality is that we wanna make sure we're identifying those behaviors so we can teach the behavior along with the academics. But that the two of them are truly separated out. Because for me to call them to a parent and say, hey, Laura's not turning her stuff in on time. What's going on? What's the reason for that? There may be an extent in the circumstance that, oof, I didn't realize that. But should she be jeopardized to not get into a good college? Because she knows her things, but is there any circumstance to say she can't turn things in on time?
So I was gonna ask, are we gonna be in more of a learning targets-based situation? Are we gonna get in more in-depth than that?
Yep, yep. Yeah, that's part of the ongoing stuff that we really have to work with, you know, ourselves, with teachers and just make sure that whatever learning targets we are using are coming directly from standards and that we are very clear in the language that we are using because sometimes those standards are written in total edutainment and you read them and go, I mean, even we as professionals sometimes will go, okay, okay, what? Why do you think I have to write that? So we have to put our own interpretation hats on and chew it over a little bit, make sure that we're understanding. And then, more often than not, we're gonna rewrite it in terms that are friendly to students and friendly to families rather than let it stand for itself in the edutainment.
I'm sorry. I know we're going back now, back to the semantics of letters and E, P, B, C. Is there any reason we're at the letters we're at now? Because then it used to be A, P, B, and I don't remember what the first one was.
Yeah, the beginning, developing, proficient and exceeds. That's just the most common language that schools are adopting right now. And Ellenbrook just had it really clearly laid out one day and then we started looking at other schools. And that just seems to be those common terminology that schools are moving to. So we figure why make it even more convoluted? We'll try and, you know, make some commonalities along the way.
So, I mean, you know, we've had conversations, you know that I can get into the weeds on this. I don't know that everybody's got the patience for that tonight, but I do wanna talk to you at some point about some of these things. But I did hold off on some questions from earlier slides. Do you want me to hit those at the end of your presentation or do you want me to?
Well, let's see how quickly we can get through this part because the fun stuff.
I think you missed some sort of seven o'clock.
The fun stuff is, yeah, here we go.
She did.
But she did have some help, Lisa.
What? I did, only at the end. That was my clue to her because.
Okay, I'll try and go through quickly.
Don't worry about it. It's important stuff.
So what we've done with the high school grading scale is we have said, no more six different scales. For those of you that have been working with a traditional scale, stick. And that's where you live right now, that's fine. Those of you that are using a more standards-based approach, this is the one you need to use. And we made a five-level scale just so that we are in congruence with our weighted classes as well. So we've got the five points that go on here. It does at the end of the day calculate to a GPA. It matches the other system. So there's not going to be the one is calculating, one is not kind of scenario. You do have to do a little bit of infighting with the campus to get it to what we want it to. So at the end of the day, they're still gonna see letter grade equivalents. The five-point level indicator is just the levels of understanding that they are working with. And those look like this. So when you look at your own copy, it's like each level is defined so that students and parents are very clear on, a one means you're not yet meeting, can't identify strategies or needs. A two means you're approaching by doing the following. Number three means you're meeting some of the targeted content, but you might need some help along the way. Four means you're doing it with a little less support. And five means that you have kind of gone on and above and beyond. That exceeding level is kind of our bane right now because we have people that want us to clearly define it. And right now, we clearly define it by saying, the person who's getting a five on the scale has gone beyond the level that we are working at currently. So the standard target that students have been put before them, have had put before them, they've gone beyond that. They've taken it to a whole different level and moved on without any facilitation or help.
And according to this, that's the only way to get an A? To exceed targeted content, which is a level indicator of five or at least a 4.76?
So 4.66 is your A minus?
You have equivalent, though.
So in other words, that's still above the four. So in the five range, you're talking about having to exceed targeted content and level expectations by dot-dot-dot?
Well, but if you look at the three, so by demonstrating original and creative thinking, offering strong explanation of reasoning, consistently using multiple strategies and multiple approaches. So it might be that you are looking at the same target, but if you can take those things and take them out of that context and put them in other contexts, this is what a typical A student will do right now. So this is not saying that we have not defined it, we've gone above and beyond. So I guess I said that not so clearly before. But if you can do those things with the content that's been put before you, trade it off, move it into a different context, move it to a different level, you know, you can teach it to somebody else, you can offer some strong backup to your thinking, you can engage in some really deep discussion around it. That would be your A and I would argue that that's what an A is right now in our traditional system.
I do like your student indicator of success. I think that's an easier way and clearer way to understand it.
We added that and I think that was really critical to affect the special. Like that's the part that like, I can teach it, which you know when you know it. The other part that we went with five point here is AP scores are, this parallels the AP, College Board and how that's done. Three and above is passing, but clearly there's a difference from a student who gets a three versus a five on an AP test. And so that sort of differentiates that. I think with four point, one of the struggles has been is like when there's four, like from a three to a four, like is the four the ultimate 100%? And is three, like there seems to be a large gap between proficient at three and then is the four like 100%? And so a lot of, I think there's, this gives a little variations in levels of proficiency in terms of that emphasis that we're looking at there.
But I guess I'm a little confused here. So on the slide before that, we, yeah, that's the slide before that. You've got the traditional 100-point scale. So are there gonna be some classes that are still doing the traditional 100-point scale? So like for a math class, if it's a multiple choice and you get all the questions right, you get 100%, how do you exceed to get into the five point when all you've done is 100%? You know what I'm saying? So there's gonna have to be some things that.
But if we're talking about deepening our thinking skills in every content area and really expecting students to not do that mile-wide inch-deep thing anymore, that's gonna happen on either side of that. The only thing that we like better about the five-point scale, just in education in general, is that it's just got clearer indicators, not evidenced by this, but evidenced by that, by the next one, where you've just got the explanations and the narratives. Now you imagine teachers will take this and infuse some of their content. So if you have a project, you create a rubric that says, within this project or this performance, basically a three looks like this, and this is the criteria. A four looks like this, but you have some content stuffing there as well. So yes, so to answer your question, John, they are going to be doing the same types of things, but we're gonna encourage them to not just say, eight out of 10, it's 80% and there's no extra learning discussion attached to it.
I would just think that unless, unless everything is designed such that there's the ability to show that you've done more than just get every question right, the student can't get a five. Unless everything is written such that a student can demonstrate that they, that they get, that they can do more than just get everything right. Unless they have the ability to do that, unless the test is written in such a way that they can demonstrate more than 100% mastery of the equipment or the material, then they can't get a five.
So the teachers that are using the traditional five also have rubrics set up differently. They're not just scoring points the way that you had talked about that. So they're grading on individual. Yeah, so that's what we're, so in math, in fact, they've won that have actually gone to that. So it's not like just adding points and having to get 100%. They're actually holistically looking at this math learning target and sort of holistically saying, just like you would on an EP exam, for example. So if they've chosen a five point, that means that they're at a point where they've done their rubrics and their classroom assessments that they're assessing in that manner. They're not like still doing an 82 out of 100 in a points-based question.
So that, four slides back, that comes down to the, okay, primarily using standardized grading protocol to determine a term grade, including a teacher's professional discretion. So you're talking about teacher's professional discretion there in a sense when they're like, well, yeah, this kid's getting, he understands all of it. So that's their opportunity to give him a five. It just seems there's a lot of, there's a lot of room here for various things, which when there's that much room for various things, that kind of goes against any kind of term in my mind that says standardized and objective. in my mind, that says standardized and objective.
There's room in the other scale as well, though. I mean, you've got ranges in that other scale as well, that teachers use their professional discretion all the time to wiggle through that, that range of whatever. And then teachers have that bubble where they're like, is it B minus, is it a B? Is it a B plus? And now we've got professional discretion happening there. So I know what you're saying, but I think it's happening no matter which scale you look at, where you've got that professional discretion going on. We're gonna try and say that if you're at the top of the scale, no matter what you're using, you've gotta really have a good idea and a good conversation happening with that kid. It's not just they hand you a paper and you make that decision. There's gotta be some dialogue and some feedback that goes with it as well.
I just had a couple of questions about the scale. Did you guys come up with a five-point equivalent, a percentage range and span? Why, I guess, why is the A only a 6.67, and then what is below a 20%?
Yeah. Well, so if you looked at regular, so if you look at this, this is the span. So this is what, this is the span of the difference between here, and here, and here, and here, and here. So this is what I was talking before, where you've got all these levels of failure, this traditional thing. Over here, we went, because, do you wanna talk about? Sure, what, just a quick, we really had to finagle, Infinite Campus does not want us doing this. Infinite Campus only knows one way of doing things. So when we're trying to be a little more creative with being clearer to kids, Infinite Campus is a hard time not convolving that with all those points and percentages still.
And that's a huge frustration-
Yep.
-to teachers, to parents, to kids.
Yep.
And they said, I had, I was at a volleyball tournament this weekend. So I thought, oh, I'll ask the parents. What do you think of this grading system? All high school parents. And that was the biggest thing. What, I came and said something about that. Why, basically, why was it not up and running when you had all summer to get it right? Okay? I don't know if it's fair or not, but that's what, that's what came back. I also saw that, it was very interesting, that there is, there's a couple of kids on the team that are, not a couple, but, yeah, a couple that are on the higher ends of the A, trying to get maybe top 10% in their class, maybe trying to get valedictorian, salvatorian, whatever it may be. And those kids and their parents didn't like this, because they didn't have a clear path to it. From what, from what, I'm not saying it's right or wrong.
Yeah, yeah.
This is what they're feeling out there and saying to me. I asked, because I asked a question. Those are the two big things that were really, and why do we keep changing? That was the other thing, so.
I can maybe answer the first part of the question. So as I came on board, you know, and I started investigating and learning about different things and talking to the different departments, you know, we actually had a conversation about grading, you know, district-wide during our August launch. And Chris facilitated the meeting with me and my teachers, just, they got up and they were arguing with each other. One side, standard-based, the other side, traditional, and why one was better than the other for various reasons, similar to the discussions we've had here. Through continuing discussions, we realized that, okay, we needed to do something. Because we were all over the place, and we needed to kind of narrow our focus down and get to a common understanding using some common language. Because, quite frankly, the same four-point scale in math and in global language meant two different things. Global language had their different cut scores than math did. And so, half the schools doing standard-based already, half the schools doing, you know, the 100-point scale. How do we get it so that those two translate to each other well? And how do we get those so that parents aren't frustrated with, well, my kid, you know, got an 80% on this, that translates to a four for this teacher, but translates to a 3.5 for that teacher? Like, that's not fair, that's not equal. So that was the conversation that we had to have. And just time really pushed us back and pushed us back to get, to get that fully rolled out and do it right the first time.
So I guess the question I have, for those of you who are parents, are, were you aware that prior to this year, there were six different grading scales going on in the high school?
You could see it.
Okay. That was a new learning for us, that it was happening. So at the elementary school, there was one, and it was across the board. So as new people came on board in new positions, to your question, literally across the board, from technology to wherever, and we have to use that, rely on that even from Infinite Campus. And we don't really have a person who really owns Infinite Campus and the computer programming and that stuff. We're training all new people. The district just didn't have people in those roles. We have a new data and assessment person, but that role didn't exist. So it was never addressed in terms of, why are there so many? It was not good before. So we're trying to write that piece of it, and we didn't wanna rush it. So we could have said, but when new people started July 1st, and we sort of said, it, we wanted to make sure that it backed everything, that the system was there. And then, once we found out what Infinite Campus, because, I mean, we're working with other districts. We've called programmers there and saying, what can it do? So the dilemma that you see on those grading scales from the high school is the same dilemma that every school district has gone to standard-based reporting, whether it's Skyward or Power School or Infinite Campus, whatever software you're using, is literally a computer programming issue. And so unless you truly go to a standard-based report card, which is putting in their 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and getting rid of letter grades, you will always have the mathematical dilemma that you see shaded in the light blue there. And that is the challenge for parents. And so if you can find computer programmers to how to work around it, we would love it. Because we've been, every district, I don't care who you are. So part of it is that. So we've actually simplified it in terms of there are only two systems in the high school. But part of it is, we've uncovered that, for a while, there hasn't been some deep learning or understanding of teachers of even what this meant. Sometimes we've been going through the motion over the last couple of years. And I think we've all been going, okay, we can't continue on this way. We've gotta pause it and get back to make sure that people actually understand what they're doing here and right the ship. And so it's, it's not been perfect. None of us would have liked to do it, but we couldn't have kept on going the way that we were too, because having that many different grading scales and explaining it. So by going public and communicating it, making a big deal, might be bringing it to forefront. We're okay.
Well, that was my question. Did we communicate that to parents at the beginning of the school year?
That we were delaying grading? Yes.
Yes, we did, multiple times in the connect, yep.
Okay.
Before school started, actually.
And to your point of not wanting to change again, I mean, it was important for us to not start the school year and say, oh, wait, 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 now that we've had this conversation behind the scenes, and the teachers have bought into a consistent system, and we all agree that this is gonna work, we're gonna change to that now. Because that, that would be unfair to students and, you know, families.
But ultimately, we report average to higher learning, right? A number.
We report any-
Not a 1 through 5 number, a-
A letter grade.
A letter grade, right?
Like, converts to a GPA, right?
Right. So then, the question that was brought up at lunch was, why are we doing that if ultimately, we go, we fall back to what the traditional way was?
Right, exactly. That's a conversation we had five years ago, that you were actually the only one that could explain it of the different teachers I asked back then. But, well, at least that allowed me to understand it. But you're absolutely right, Quinn. We go from this thing to a thing, and then back-
I'm just saying, this is what parents felt at lunch on Saturday.
And when you say, Charlie, that we report a letter grade, don't we actually report a GPA?
Well, so a student's transcript has the letter grade for each of the courses and GPA. And ultimately, what a lot of colleges do is, they reweight your GPA, because they look at your classes that you've taken. And if you've taken, you know, courses that they see are more valuable courses, they weight those as higher, you know, in their formula.
So not all universities or colleges do that, right?
From my experience, most universities reweight your GPA.
They unweight it.
Or unweight your GPA.
They unweight your GPA.
They take it and they look at your English classes, and they say, those are more valuable than your gym classes.
So right now, we do grades, grade-weighted. Isn't that what the GW means, grade-weighted? So like, an A is worth 5.0 on the GPA scale? If it's an AP or an honors course? Are we gonna continue to do that?
That's a discussion that we need to have. We've opened up the can of worms of these discussions, and, you know, we're getting ready to pick at the worms and send that college.
And I would say that if you change from that, you're almost gonna need to have to, starting with this class, it's changed. So for four years in high school, you're gonna have to have two different systems.
Correct.
Otherwise, that nightmare.
Oh, yeah.
You should hand it, just hand it off to Quinn, he'll take it on.
Yeah, I'm the least smart guy here. So why would we do that? But, so, how many of these districts out there in our general area are doing this?
Who isn't?
Who isn't? That's another question.
Yep, that's a better question.
Okay, who isn't?
I don't know, I can't answer that, because everybody I know is.
In the woodland conference? Let's just stay-
Standards-based, sure.
What we're doing here, yes, that's what-
Absolutely, standards-based. And they're dealing with the same issues. So we're calling the districts in, in our woodland conference. In fact, two of our people today went to Greenfield to have them help them with the Infinite Campus piece of what we're doing. They literally, we're finally like, getting caught up to where they've been, because they've been there already to work some of the tricks around Infinite Campus.
Now, why can't we tell Infinite Campus, Skyward-
Yep. So we, so we had a conference, Paul Lyndon and Todd Stacey and I did last week with Elm Brook, and their computer programmer and chief information officer, and asked them that same thing. And they said, it's, we're a little, tiny little piece of that. They're so worried about in the student information system of just compliance for DPI reports and that, that they won't, the money that it costs to do this is, it's not worth their computer programmers' time. And that's where they all are. I don't care what software program you're doing. All of us who've said that have said that.
So hopefully, we have a good turnout tomorrow night. And hopefully, I and we have prepared you for maybe some of the questions that may come your way.
Yep.
Yeah, to me, a big question that came up with the five-point scale was really true, the confusion then for some of that weighted grades. Because we're so used to talking about the four-point GPA system, and we start throwing the five-point in there. And that confuses the mix that, well, is this the weighted? So I think some of it-
Change is difficult.
Some of it really is just having those conversations to clear up that, okay, five-point scale translates to an A, B, C, D, F. The GPA is calculated differently. So it's definitely good conversations that I'm hoping to have tomorrow night.
Right, Kevin. We ever just thought of dropping the pluses and minuses?
Yes.
A slash B? Marquette University does that.
That's what A, A, B's, B's, A, B's, and that's it. And that's the other correlation of that five, for when you think about it. There, you can't get less than, otherwise you have to retake the class. So that's why this is much more parallel in the post-secondary world than we might think.
But that's a lot of places.
But if you drop that, then don't you end up, kind of what you're trying to avoid with some of your, you know, these guys don't do so well, maybe they don't, maybe know a lot at the beginning of the semester, and then towards the end of the semester, they do really well. And you're trying to, well, don't you end up with sort of a same kind of a cutoff issue, where, okay, they're A students, so they slipped a tenth of a percentage point, or however you wanna, however you wanna grade it, and now they're a B student, which makes a huge difference in the grade point. And the grade point is what, and the letters, is what colleges see.
Yeah, and I think it produces-
So how bad is it if you turn it into, you know, A, C, F, or for that matter, pass/fail? So you're either, your students are either four points or zeros. You see what I mean? So the more, the more steps in the scale, the more the scale actually has relevance.
The more steps, wait, plus and minus.
The more steps in the scale, the more, the more segments to the scale, the more marks on the metronome, you know? But no, the more steps in the scale, the more the scale can have relevance to accurately, to somewhat accurately reflecting the student that it's supposed to be reflecting.
Yeah, but if we're really saying, a student has mastered a concept or he has not. I was on board with almost the pass/fail thing. Like, we wanna, we wanna be about learning. We don't wanna be about, okay, you know, jump through these hoops to get to this. And, okay, you just jumped through this hoop, jump. We really wanna, and look at all the time we're taking right now, talking about the points and the percentages and the scales and the-
Because it's not simple.
And it's, what's that?
Because it's not simple.
It's not simple. And we're trying to figure out, how do we take this system and make it a clear communication tool about learning and around learning? So we say, maybe we do away with the pluses and minuses and go to a different system? That's all on the table as we just try and figure this out. Now, do we wanna change it again next week? No. We wanna try and find a system that we can, that we can live with and really learn about. But it's all about the clarity of the learning and the proficiency factor, and do we understand it before we move ahead?
But what the grade point comes down to is trying to relay some form of a picture of this student to whoever the student's trying to get to look at them to go forward. And I know I've heard some people say, well, in the end, grade points don't really matter, and some universities aren't really looking at that stuff and that kind of thing. I can tell you that 35 years out of high school, and I'm applying for jobs where they want my high school transcript. I have a doctorate, and they want my high school transcript. You see what I'm saying? So you can't really say right now whether a high school, and in fact, I can tell you right now that a high school transcript does matter. I just can't tell you whether it's gonna matter in 35 years. But I know one from 35 years ago matters now.
I guess the other, these two for us is, is a 3.0 GPA at Whitnall worth the same as a 3.0 GPA at some other school?
But if that other school does plus-minus grading, and that 3.0 Whitnall student actually would have had a 3.3 or something like that, if we had plus-minus grading. But that, that Greenfield student does have a 3.3, and Whitnall not doing plus-minus has a 3.0, aren't we now looking at undervaluing the picture that we're sending forward of our student?
I think you misunderstand the-
Yeah, there's still being in-between.
There's still an in-between. It's just not two in-betweens. It's A, A slash B, B, B slash C. So instead of an A minus being worth 3.67, and a B plus being worth 3.333, an A slash B is worth a 3.5.
Okay, so you're just talking about taking, taking a few of the steps out of the-
Yes.
More or less.
So- Plus and minuses out, you just have the A, A, B, B.
You have the middle.
So my, my, I imagine this is not the focus of your talk, but since we're into that, my, my take on it is still, sometimes to understand some of these things, you can take it to the extreme. Like I said, pass/fail, you don't really know that much detail about the student's ability. And if you have 100 steps in there, you've gotten unmanageable. So, but I do know that a plus-minus thing is not, not, doesn't seem to me to be incredibly unmanageable, since they've been doing it for a long time. So I just don't know why we would change that.
Because as Kevin said, a lot of colleges do the A, A, B, B. So if we're trying to align with that.
But as Charlie said, they also deconstruct our, our students' transcripts already.
No, no, when you're grading in college, you get an A, A, B, or a B. That's what he's saying. So whereas a new GPA, so they're lining the grades that way.
I'm maintaining that the GPA, though, coming out of high school does matter.
And it still will, yeah.
And then it would change, it would change if you have fewer steps. Well, just like I said, if you take it to the extreme and you go pass/fail, then a student is either 4.0 or zero on, on a class.
But you'd still have the same variation in between. It's just whatever plus-minus letter we've assigned to you, you'd still have the same points.
You'd have fewer points. You just said that. You'd have A, A, B, B versus A, A minus, B plus.
It averages itself out.
So one of the things to know is, at the end of the month, we are, so if, I've gone to before, the admissions counselors in universities, and it's pretty, listening to them, for example, Madison, they can tell you, name the high school, and they will tell you. So they can tell you what Elm Brook transcripts are and what, they will tell you the rigor. So when they get a kid from whatever high school, they know it that well, the level of rigor. They know how many AP classes are offered there. And when they look at that student's transcript, they know whether or not they took the rigorous schedule based on what's offered. So up north, they may only offer four AP classes in this school. But if that student took all of them, and they went to Elm Brook that offers 26 AP classes, and that student took four, they will look at that differently. It's not the number of AP classes. They have it down to that science. Elm Brook doesn't rank students, they don't do valedictorians, and so that class rank is not even counted anymore. They also look at how that, so they have historical, you wanna talk about algorithms of data by school data? They have that. So I think it's interesting. And so our counselors, and we're sending a lot of people to go and listen to that to be able to understand that better, because we don't wanna put our students at a disadvantage by any means. But we do wanna know what's happening on their side of the table when they're looking at our students.
Absolutely.
And what, what might, what could we be doing better and what, what is the perception of Whitnall when they look at some of our students' transcripts? So those are the things that we're looking at. So we're starting to look at a lot of the practices. This is just the tip of the iceberg because you talk about weighted classes, you talk about auditing, you talk about all of those things that we've set up in a system. Once you start to pull on one thread, there's a lot of things that are built upon those assumptions too, so.
And just one other point on that, so this weekend on the Wall Street Journal, one of their top articles was on dropping, high schools dropping valedictorians in class ranking.
High school drop what?
Valedictorians in class rankings. I mean, on the Wall Street Journal, so it's not like we're talking about the Southwest Now or whatever that is.
Wall Street.
We like you.
Yeah, we like you, Tiffany, I'm just saying, it's not like Whitnall is, Whitnall's bubble is doing this and the rest of the world is not.
But you have to look at the reason for that. I mean, is the reason for that because they don't wanna make some kids feel bad about themselves or is the reason for that because they don't see any practical reason to it? And if there is, but maybe that got started to begin with for some competition to, as one way of motivating kids to go forward. So it may be some kinda current trend, but it's not necessarily, you know, depending on why they, what they're talking about, it's not necessarily a, a positive trend in the long run.
Sure, my point in bringing it up was that it's not just Whitnall.
It's not just us, it's in question.
Yeah, so I haven't, I'm not-
And that's been going on for decades, I feel a lot, yeah, a lot of them do the cum laude system like-
It's all Lisa's fault, really.
No, it's laude, cum laude, like colleges have. Because who vies for that top spot? Well, if I audit a class in my senior year, second semester, I can definitely guarantee rank, rank one versus the second-ranked child who isn't going to do that cause my counterpart. That's a game we're playing. It's, there is no difference between, if we're, if we're differentiating thousands of decimal places to determine one and two, like, that's not really an indicator of where they're gonna be. They're both, what is the top one, summa cum laude or whatever, I mean, you know what I'm saying? And that's how colleges do it, they give that designation, it's not, they don't limit the number of people that can have a spot. It's like if you meet the attainment of whatever the GPA is for it and any other things, then that's what, then that's what that becomes, so.
And here's the reality, we could've stayed with the six different systems at the high school through this year and just muddled through.
Go to and fun to watch Charlie.
What's that?
Go to and fun to watch Charlie deal with that.
Yeah, but I mean, instead, we're addressing, we're identifying a problem, we're trying to fix it. I mean, uh, I, it's, it's a tough conversation to have now and people are gonna be fresh, why the timing, why this? But I think, whereas before we may have been complacent with, okay, let's just get through because that's how it is. As a whole, we're addressing issues and saying what makes the most sense and what's gonna be best for our kids going forward.
Well, I, I, I think it's, it's, I mean, it's, it's very important to tackle this, this tough thing. I mean, yeah, you can't go run around, although like I said, the entertainment value would've been high, but, but you, you can't go out with six different systems and, yeah, again, how does that involve the word standardized at all? So, yeah, it's a tough nut to tackle and you've gotta, you gotta do it, so I commend you guys for doing it. And that doesn't mean that your solutions are gonna be easily accepted or easily understood, you know? And also trying to get it right the first time is, is it, is a challenge, but, but I'm, I'm glad you're, you're, you're trying, you know?
Yeah, no, the only thing I would say is, this does not mean that the stuff that was done before to have all these pilots were done poorly and that it was mismanaged. I'm just, the, why the teachers were doing that for the math department for the last three and four were, were the right reasons. It's just, I don't wanna make it seem like-
Well, that's right, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, in terms of that, that there wasn't anything going on, it's just time to finally make some decisions. Cause teachers were piloting some things in, we're language or French or whatever it was and it's just time to say we're done piloting, we've gotta move forward with an accurate system. So I don't want it to come across as-
And, and the, I, I would say the, the buy-in, the conversations that I got from teachers, you know, after this first initial really tough conversation, phenomenal.
Chris, Chris has volunteered to continue.
The fact that I, I had some teachers who were traditionally stuck in a practice that maybe that this was scary to go down this road. Where we're saying, this kinda makes sense and I, and I'm intrigued and I wanna try this because it, this makes sense now. And so the buy-in for me was, was beautiful, so I, I wanna make sure that-
Well, and to Lynn, to Lynn's point, I'm sorry, to Lisa's point, you know, in Lynn's four slides of Bob Bullock, you know, that we just housed four or five different grading scales at one time, confusing with students' parents, but done for the right reasons. I mean, I mean, she points that right out.
Yep, yep, I just wanna make sure, yeah, I don't wanna sound like we're beating up stuff because it's, it's all been for the right reasons and so, absolutely.
Well, and I, I said earlier, it was a horrifying moment, but all of these high school teachers in this tail group this summer, when they start saying, well, this is our scale, well, that's our scale, this is our scale. You can see even high school teachers with themselves are going, really? They were surprised that there was that many different things actually floating around internally, so.
Was it the same within each department?
No, oh, with the department, yes. But like within the school, it was just like, you know, yeah, so you had math be one thing and geometry be something and-
So there's some, there's some standardization there, though, that each department may have been doing their own thing, but they were doing it across the board in the department.
Correct.
That's less scary.
You know what was interesting, what, one thing that was interesting is here's an elementary person working with high school staff and having a conversation happen. There were some people that really stepped up beginning of the year and had some brave conversations department to department about, maybe we need to standardize some of this for our families and, for our, for each other, you know? And for kids especially. So, um, I would agree that if that led to some positive momentum, great. Cause that was not an easy conversation.
And I think it's important to understand where they came from. You know, you have departments where some individuals were invited to participate in, um, in district groups that were looking at the grading initiative. But those were, were few and it wasn't always every department. And so you had people who got excited and, you know, tried to make something happen with what they were being taught. And then you have other people on the outside who may not have been a part of that, but got intrigued and, you know, tried to have conversation and take it back and create something that they thought worked best for their content area. Forgetting about a system, which is really what we're trying to create, is a K-12 systematic approach to it rather than, you know, not only a silo in a building, but a silo in content areas.
This is the middle school grading scale. There's no points attached to this. Um, this is simply going to be that beginning developing provisioning seats. Um, again, there's just some criteria in each box so that people can have conversations, parents, students, teachers, administrator can have clearer conversations over what each of those means. Um, it, it does largely mirror the other system, it's just a four-point rather than a five-point. Um, getting indication that that we might have to, not have to, but we might wanna talk about that tomorrow night as well when we have the, the parent listening session. Because there are some parents looking at this scale and looking at the other one going, hmm, they both can be five-point or they both can be four-point. So there's, you know, there's gonna be a lot of questions as we move forward. And this is, um, I won't play this for you, but if you want to go, Rick Morley is a middle school teacher who has been coaching people on how to be clearer with reporting and clear about learning behaviors and reporting grading behaviors versus the academics or vice versa. And he's really one of the lead chargers on, you know, let's not get the two messed up and let's not get the two confused. These are some of the behaviors that are actually kind of detrimental to students for a variety of reasons. One that comes up a lot is homework. And grading homework is an issue because this needs to be a risk free, if, if homework is gonna be practice, we need to take the risk off of it. We need to not force students to feel like they need to either cheat or they need to rely on somebody else to help them do it or, we really want it to be about the learning. So when you grade the homework and you attach a risk factor to it, it no longer becomes the practice thing that we wanted it to be. We want them to be able to practice, make the mistakes, learn from the mistakes and move on. The other, the other dangerous point about grading homework is that not everybody necessarily has a home to go to. And when we are saying to all of our students, go home and do this tonight, we tend to forget that we have some students that might be sleeping in a car that night. We have some students that might not have a place to land in, there might not be an internet issue. So for us to unilaterally say, you are all expected to do this homework, it's to be kind of a slippery slope, you know? And when we think about Jackie's presentation, we've got that social, emotional thing going on. So we need to be sort of adhering to our better judgment there too. Um, zeros or reduced, reduced grades for, yeah, I think I put up there, reduce, uh, reduced grades for behaviors. Um, zeros again, if you're gonna say a zero reflects no learning, no knowledge, no nothing. Um, I used to say this to a student, nobody knows nothing, so there's no such thing as knowing nothing. So we can't say that we know nothing, so we can't settle for that zero. And then the averaging of scores we talked about earlier. Um, if you wanna look up this guy, he's a hoot, he's very, very passionate, it's like, really passionate.
Did I miss retakes?
That's the video, so you get to go home and watch the video, he does a wonderful seven-minute clip. It's beautiful.
Is this, is this my, is this my, uh, uh, items for future?
It is.
And I gotta go, I don't get a personal tummy?
No, no, you do. We'll give you an explanation.
It's your homework.
She like-
I know.
Here's, here's the deal, we found out that while the policy was that retakes were allowed last year, there was some allowances for departments to sort of go out on their own and modify it. That is not the case this year. So this is how it works to simplify it in terms of communicating it also to parents. This was the biggest thing, is that if you're a parent reading the grade book, sometimes our teachers aren't thinking what parents and students see on their side, they're only thinking of it as a teacher tool. So here's how it works, if your child has taken an assignment and it wasn't proficient, it wasn't their best work, the teacher will put in the score, let's say it's twenty percent, twenty percent, heaven forbid. They will also indicate an I in there, meaning you need to go back and retake this cause this was not your best work. You need to go back and relearn it, you need to go back and study it because that's not an acceptable score. So as parents are looking, anytime they see an I, your indication as a parent is that my child can go back and retake this. To Kevin's point, you can't go eighteen weeks because if they haven't caught that learning, you are now perpetuating the learning gap. So at some point, so after the teacher puts an I in the comments, they will put the date in which the retake has to be done by, October fifteenth. So if you as a parent are scanning your child's grade report, you can see any things that have I's, they stand out really obviously. And in the comment, you see the date that they can go back and do a retake by. At some point, reality hits and if that child has not, the I goes away and that twenty percent stays. So the balance of retakes is, we want you to go back, relearn it, not just retake. Please understand it's not just about retaking, it's relearning it and reassessing it. We also understand there's the reality of it can't sit out there forever because learning has to go on. And that's a consistent policy. The highest score stays in there. So if I take it again and I get a ten percent, the twenty percent stays in there.
So I have no problems with, uh, with that, that policy because the, the point is to get the child to know the material. It's not, you know, to know it with this set of questions by this date and only then, and then ramped up. And, and they say, the, I think the research used to show something like, you really only retain twenty percent of, of what you're taught. So part of it is, you know, not so much, excuse me, in this day and age, like, like when I was in, in vet school, we felt like they were trying to teach us five-hundred percent of what we needed to know so that we would know a hundred percent. But, but one of the biggest takeaways we had was, was really where to find the information. And it wasn't as easy then as it is now, but to know what you needed to look, to, to recognize what you needed to look for and then know where to find it. And, and, you know, to, to that end, I mean, that's, that's right up there with, uh, but, but they do need to know that Wiki is not the, the be-all, the end-all. And, and a Google search is not the, the final answer for cramming for a test.
So this was more about communicating, cause parents were like, how do I know which of these grades my child can retake or which ones they can't? So we spent a lot of time working through that, that I is an indication to a parent and a student and a case manager and a counselor and anybody else who's watching a child's grade, coaches or whomever else. You've got some retakes that you can do to help right now. Before, if they would've put a zero or a ten, parents are looking at all the classes, they don't know which ones they can retake. So part of this system was to be able to clearly communicate to parents by looking, hey, you can go back and do this by this date. Not just, you might be able to in this class, this teacher allows them, this teacher doesn't, this teacher. So this was really about a clear, consistent communication.
And consistent, right, everybody, right, exactly, cause it was not that way just last year.
Yep. Yep.
Well, I just wanna say, though, that that's not what was communicated. What was communicated was one standard policy, how maybe they took it and derived their own policy, which didn't necessarily come to our attention.
Tell after the fact, yep.
It was not advertised, go back and make this your own. It was one, I mean, I can bring up the document, it was one that was important to that.
Right, but would you agree that it was misinterpreted from what you?
Well, based on what you guys are saying, I guess this, this is the first that I've heard that.
Really?
I just wanna be clear that that's not what was communicated by us.
It was the Wild West.
And we'll, we'll make sure that we have a very explicit look back tomorrow night with some visuals.
Where is this listening session, other than in slide thirteen, where's this listening session posted? Cause I couldn't find it in the district calendars.
In the Connect, chatting.
E-weekly, Facebook, Twitter.
Is there a reason that's not in our-
Infinite Campus, it just sent out to every single parent again today as a reminder. I know, we put it out six different ways.
I didn't get that.
The Infinite Campus email today?
I didn't get it and I did check the, well, depending on what time it came in, and I did check the district calendars and didn't see it on there. I just figured something like that would be on our calendar.
It was not on the district, you are correct, it was not on the district calendar for-
You know, not everybody-
It's an event for tomorrow.
I, every time I get on Facebook, which is on average about twice a year, my wife has to teach me how to do it cause they changed it since the last time I got on. So not all of us are Facebook, I don't do Twitter at all, I'm just saying that district calendar should be a standard place.
Yep, we'll have to make sure that when we do events that it gets on there, I'm not sure who's, we'll let know, but it was sent out as an email?
It was not on there, I agree.
You got an email today, though, on it? You got an email, so it did get out as an email today.
Like Jonathan, I did look, John said, I did look at the calendar myself, it was not on there.
Is this English paper challenge system still in effect?
It's the what, I'm sorry?
Where if you disagree with your grade on your English paper from your teacher, you could challenge it having another teacher grade it, is that still something we have?
Do you know about that, Charlie?
Cause I know a lot of, when I went through high school here, there was, that was advertised of, if you disagree with a, a grade, you could have another teacher grade it, but then you'd have to accept whatever grade they give you.
I imagine that's trying to employ a little bit of objectivity or something, I don't know.
There was something that was advertised every year.
We, we, when there's been, there's been, we've had multiple people read papers to, you know, provide additional information to the student or to the parents, but that's not that.
Just curious, also how they had a different, English had a stricter grading scale than the other areas also was bizarre too, where everything else, you know, ninety to a hundred was A or A minus. English was the ninety-three and above is an A, ninety-two to whatever was a B plus.
But-
I would assume, I assume we would be getting back, you know, with a five-point going to a standard, everything is the same across the board.
Ninety-three and above is A or whatever, yeah. Would I say, it seems like the standards are higher this way?
Okay, and then, so we have our parent listening session tomorrow evening here. And on October twenty-sixth, as Dr. Olson said, we are, CSAT One is sponsoring a university panel presentation. So there are eight different universities from Wisconsin that will be present with district office people, principals, counselors, to talk about exactly what we've been talking about tonight. Just, you know, how do universities, what does it look like from their side of the table when they're getting applications, admissions? We've now got more and more schools that are really trying to do something different with the grading system and how does that affect what's happening on, on the other side? The links down below are just links that you could follow, it's just some interesting, um, just some interesting reading to take various perspectives. One is from a professor at Concordia, one is written by a high school teacher in his practice, and another is a blog of a magazine. So it's just all kind of a variety of perspectives that you could take and do some reading.
Anything else, anybody?
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, oh, are you, who's doing the presentations tomorrow? Is it all you? Or like, for the presentations for the different gradings, do the parents, who's giving?
Yeah.
Um, I did get the email, it came in at five-thirty and I was doing other things at five-thirty, so I just wanted to correct it. Yes, I did get the email, but it was five-thirty this evening.
Okay, so number four is, uh, discussion and it'll be the district dashboard and career readiness.
There is a-
Do you have to stand at the podium or what?
Nope.
You have a third presentation?
Yes.
So this document that you see here is, um, in that folder and with the other two presentations. So tonight, there's no decision-making tonight, but we need to start looking at data if we're going to start making decisions. So we had talked about the redefining report card, there's academic readiness, there's career readiness and then life skills. We're starting with career readiness, it's a little less consuming. Um, the academic readiness, we're getting all of our data put together from academic achievement, we're doing a lot of our testing, so we'll pull that together. State report cards are gonna be out in November this year, so we'll take a look at when all of that, so a couple of weeks ago, Forward Exam and ACT were, are released. So we're taking a look at all of that, trying to determine what that means, looking at some trend data to pull that together for the board to look at. So tonight, we're gonna look at the career readiness things and really, this is an interactive dialogue. The board in terms of having input on what do we wanna value with some career readiness indicators? Um, and those would be our, and then we would start to look at what is our baseline data from those things right now. So remember that this is based in research and I've given you a link to that research about where the career readiness is. So other organizations, not Whitnall, have gone back and surveyed, um, you know, students once they get out in the workforce careers, right after high school, right after college. And have said, when they take a look at some traits that all of them have had, these are traits that they can say they see over and over again. Involvement in co-curriculars, they've had some work-based learning along the way, whether it's a college internship, a high school co-op, they've worked on an industry certification, Microsoft, welding, whatever it might be. Community service, when you look at any of those attributes, attendance rates, those are some things that show that someone is ready for the career readiness piece of it. So the bulleted list that you see there in terms of ninety percent attendance and I would, you know, I think when we look at that piece of it, it looks, you know, relatively low. Um, in terms of, of what that is, what we have at Whitnall here. Students who complete twenty-five hours of community service have a much stronger sense of civic engagement, they understand what that means, whether they're in the workforce or, or workplace or wherever they, um, go in terms of looking at that. So what I wanted to do with you is share some of our data and sort of start to get some thoughts on where we would wanna focus our career readiness. Um, I think as we've talked a little bit about grading, if there are some things in terms of workplace or career things that we wanna look at that, that would impact our curriculum guide. Maybe offerings that we're looking at for co-ops or apprenticeships or courses, which we've gotta start to get the ball rolling if those are gonna be offerings for our students next year. So if you look at our attendance data, if you click on that attendance data, and you can get this publicly online, I just pulled together just a couple of different, um, charts that are there. So if you look at Whitnall for the last five years, I would say we're averaging as a district- So if you look at Whitnell for the last five years, I would say we're averaging as a district right around 95%. And then if you look at the high school, you can see the data there is a little bit lower. Middle School, Edgerton, and then Hales Corners. At the very end, I took our district, you can only do five at a time. I looked at the statewide average. I just picked Greendale, Greenfield, and Muskego just because they're neighboring school districts. And so you can see in terms of percentages where we fall as far as attendance. So when you look at that national career readiness, obviously you're looking at districts that the bar of 90% seems pretty low to where we are at Whitnell. So one of the questions would be, do we believe, you know, if attendance is something that we want to benchmark or look at over time, what would that number be? Clearly, 90% does not make sense. Do you want to have a stretch goal? Do you want to say 96 is our, you know, like here we know where our benchmark data is. We want to say that we believe in 96% attendance. Is that unrealistic? Do we think that we could do that? I guess that's one of the questions in terms of attendance, in terms of what we believe in. Specifically, high school, if you're looking at that piece, you know, and that gets a little bit more challenging as we deal with different situations with high schoolers, if they're not living at home, if they're living with others and getting them there. We take attendance twice a day at our elementaries, we take it hourly at middle and high school. That's just typical of how attendance is taken. So when you count for what excused absences are, medical, sick and all of that stuff, some of that is dictated by the state, some of it is local policy in terms of all of that. So any questions on attendance data? I mean, it's pretty flat, there's not a lot to it, but I guess just interest in considering attendance data for, for one of those things? Would just, I guess, we don't have to answer it at this time, but I guess just thoughts on where you find attendance data in terms of the realms of readiness?
Well, when we were at that.
Legislative breakfast, yeah.
And our state senator, I shouldn't know his name.
Steve Craig?
Yep, said, we only expect our people to be there. So that means, 90% means one in 10, 10 days, one day that person's not going to be there.
They would stay employed there if they missed every one out of 10 days.
I mean, that's really the only one that seems out of whack. Yeah. Was it acceptable? I, you know, then you say 95, well, half a day, I don't know. I really don't know. I, I, I know he's not working for me. Because you, you can't. I mean, and, and, but I will say, there are plenty of, I'm sure there's plenty of businesses out there that, that is acceptable because that's what they can get.
Right, it depends upon the industry, right? Sure.
Yeah.
I guess what I would recommend is we not go lower than 95%. And a part of the thing is to just stay at 95 and not drop low and monitor it. That's an okay benchmark. Or if you want to say, hey, we should try for 96, we'd have to really push and say, like, how realistic is it? Obviously, kids on field trips and stuff like that does not count against that data. We're literally talking kids who just don't show up. Our truancy field, you know, goes into that, but that's just one of those pieces of data. So I don't want to spend a lot of time, but I just thought if you haven't looked at it and how we compare with neighboring districts, it was just a piece of information to share. The next piece.
So you're going to raise it to 95?
Well, to say, as a district, we're at that. The high school falls a little bit below, but our district average is above it. So I guess I'll bring back, I just wanted to hear if there were some, some strong feelings on that. Community service, we talked about it admin team last week. And there are some districts that require community service hours to graduate. I think where we felt we should start from is because we do hear about this close-knit community and the value of civic engagement, is that we thought we would try to do service learning within the schools, like either a class project or a grade level doing it or a service day, Jackie mentioned a couple of years ago, when it was part of the previous strategic planning, organizing that and going out to do that. So we thought we would start, instead of making a graduation requirement, that we just have to start embedding that philosophy from kindergarten all the way up, that if it's a community service learning day, like first graders are doing this, second graders are doing that, and see how that goes. Because one of the challenges of, of logging hours is someone's got to manage the hours and the paperwork. And while some of our students might do that for National Honor Society or confirmation class or whatever they're doing, you still have to validate, did they really do that? Did they really rake the leaves? And is raking the leaves for your grandma the same as, you know? So you get into all of those things. So we thought right now in terms of management, that we would implement a, a district-wide calendar, starting next year, with planned intentional community service learning projects across the entire district and start to build that sense of community service across the district. So that's why you don't see a link there, because it's not a graduation requirement for us. We're not saying we should recommend it now, but start to embedding that philosophy of it. So that's sort of where we had our discussion last week on, so. The next one has to do with what I'm calling career learning coursework. So our school-to-work coordinator through the consortium, the Carl Perkins piece, Marilyn McAdams, who, this is her second year with the district. We had someone else prior to that. If you look at the data here, so youth apprenticeships, so you can see that we, the, the true youth apprenticeships we're doing in either information, technology, manufacturing. One exciting part, we met with the DWD when they came here, and we had one of our students, which is the governor's big push, cross over into the registered adult apprenticeships from youth apprenticeship, and that was pretty exciting. So he did the youth apprenticeship here last year and crossed over into the adult registered on his first year out of high school. So they're really big into trying to create that consistent piece instead of just doing youth apprenticeship. So that's our youth apprenticeship data, it's not a lot. I'm just presenting it to you and then we can come back and look. We currently do not have certified co-ops in our school because you have to be a career technical education teacher, so business, marketing, health, consumer science, AIG, that you have that license to offer that. We do offer some internships. A lot of them are with students helping other teachers in terms of internships. Industry credentials, at, at your own leisure, you can go and look at what these are. There are things such as Microsoft, welding. Most of the trades have industry credentials that you can get, take a certification fast, A-plus hardware, whatever it might be. At Whitnell, the only industry credentials that our students are trying for is the CNA. And those are done through youth options. And so you can see the number of students that we go through the CNA. For every student that completes it, we do get $1,000 from the state as part of the incentive grants. We're obviously not getting a lot of money when we're only having one or, or some of those students go through those. Dual credit, they also go through youth options, but this is through M A T C. So you can see the number of students we've had take the welding course in different school years. This year, we've actually seen an increase in welding, three students first semester and four second semester. My understanding, after looking at the GPS stuff, is that we've limited to two students per year. That's what, is that correct, Jackie? So that would mean one junior, one senior?
No, yeah, I mean, we have had kids who have been in the same cycle.
Okay, but only two at a time, right? Is that, okay.
Yes, because their budgetary structure used to be different.
Yep.
So they were chart, their, their fees were.
Was the open enrollment amount, yeah. So they've changed the fee structure, that it's a flat rate for up to it. And I think we would be, we would be silly not to take the maximum in that first tier. So again, it's a fit for some students, a fit for some, it's not. So I think that we, we're going to look at that differently in terms of that. But for those of you who aren't familiar, it's a, it's a two-year intensive program in which students are out in our job centers and they work there, they're getting their education on site there. They get our diploma, but they also get, they're getting paid work experience at that same time. Majority of them are in manufacturing. And, and their program now extends, and many of the programs, you can even complete one year of the technical college degree while still in high school, depending upon what that is, so.
Do those students face any sort of different curricular standards from us than, than the rest of the students?
So they fall under the alternative education board policy in terms of what they have to complete. So they still take the ACT, they still take all of those tests, the literacy and all of that stuff, and they count in terms of that stuff. So any of the data on tests.
We're not putting them necessarily through the same curriculum as the rest of the students.
Correct, so their, their, their work site learning is typically in the morning for four hours and, and are, is targeted toward what they need to learn. But they're not taking your typical curriculum that you'd see here, yeah. And then if you look at the consortium classes, I'm not sure how familiar the board was with the consortium. It's with multiple districts. In the two years, in terms of, these are, these are classes that our students are taking at a different high school because we don't offer them here, basically fall under the career technical education field. And so you can see the numbers that are there. And those are just FYI things. So this is one of those areas that is a career readiness indicator. If you have any of these, it indicates that you, you know, because you've already started basically some post-secondary work from a career readiness piece, because these are linked to specific careers when you look at what they are, whether they're the project lead the way classes, whether they're CNA classes, welding, whatever they are, they obviously have a career connection that we're looking at there. So we don't have a very robust career technical education offering. We started to talk with our counselors, Scott and I did, and Charlie will be joining us this Thursday as far as what we can do to start creating some, bring back some co-ops, some internships to lead to apprenticeships and, and hold that there, because right now I think we could be doing a little bit more with those in terms of work-based learning. So it's not just a job that a student has in high school, working at wherever. There's a lot of great places out there, so I won't even name a business. But the difference with work-based learning is they're learning and they come back to school and they debrief with the instructor about what are you facing in the workplace? What's going on? How do you work with someone who's older than your parents? How do you, you've got to actually have learning that goes along with it, not just go out and hold a part-time job for the paycheck. So that's why it's very intentional in terms of work-based learning, not just a job. You know, kids who have a job, may or may not. If they have a great workplace mentor, they might be great. So if anybody has any thoughts on work-based learning or what we are providing or what we could be providing or comparing it to other districts or anything like that, I'm open for questions or comments on this right now.
I think the thing I would say is that it's really important for it to be aligned to a course and a career path, where, you know, they are having discussion about the workplace and they're doing some of those, that skill building, but there's no real, there's no real purpose behind what job you have. I'm taking the co-op class so that I can have a work release versus taking it intentionally because I'm developing my skills that I want to explore a particular career. I think that is a big difference between what we're offering and what it could be.
Right, so we're going to be much more purposeful with students' options to take. And if they decide, I'm trying it out because I don't like it at the end of it, that's an okay thing too. Like, that's what it means to do that job, or now I've been exposed to it in the workplace? That's a really great learning thing too. So we're going to, we're working with the counselors on what that could look like. But right now, the volunteering half a credit and the intern stuff needs to be a lot more purposeful and intentional than it is right now because it doesn't have a lot of stuff with it, as Jackie said, that it could have with it. To be, especially with the academic and career plans that our students need to have, they need to be a lot more intentional experiences that they're getting, not just a way to find a half a credit right now. That's how some, not all, students are using that. Next piece then, you see our co-curricular participation. I got the, this afternoon, so I'm not sure, you can probably do the math, assuming 800-ish high school students. But if you look at athletics, which is broken down by each of the sports seasons, and then by the last five years. So you can tell with sports, because obviously students can't be in more than one fall sport at a time, that those are non-duplicated amounts. So last year, if you look at fall sports, we had 293 students, let's assume out of 800 students participate. That's a non-duplicated amount. What we, what I don't have here is the number of students and a percentage, so we need to add that if we're going to say that. And the real data that the research says is that students need to, each student, every co-curricular activity, whether it's a club or athletic, increases it. So if all of the kids who are in clubs are also in athletics, that's the same kids then. They're not different kids right now. So we need, we'll go back and look at that data to be able to decide. We need to know how many of our students are in at least one club or at least one athletic. So these are some raw numbers, if you haven't seen this in a while, as far as athletics and clubs. But I also could be an art club and DECA and Student Senate, and that could be the same student that's going down there. Those are duplicated numbers. So we need to come back and clean that up. I think most of us who've been in that high school arena would say that at least trying to encourage every student to have one affiliation, not athletics necessarily, because not all kids are athletic, but one club that they can feel associated with. And if you look at some of our survey data, the number one regret that most high school students will say is, I wished I would have gotten involved more, whatever that means, that is a common regret that students will have.
So you, you're, in a sense, these are indicators of success, of the potential for a student to succeed after high school, right? So granted, your numbers are, you know, maybe double or triple counting a student that is in more than one thing, but you're also missing students that are in things that aren't supported by the district, such as gymnastics or ice skating or something like that, which the district doesn't have a part of. But being an extracurricular activity, in, you could, I hate to assume, but you might be able to infer that, that, that could count with the same weight as one of these district-affiliated curricular things towards measuring students.
It could be, and I think the research doesn't go to things, because the word extracurricular is assuming that is about the curricular options that are offered. So that could be true about belonging to a youth group or anything, but you're, you're right.
Baseball doesn't necessarily have anything to do with, with math class. So, but you're talking, so co-curricular, you're talking about, okay, if they're, if they play baseball or volleyball or something like that, that's, that goes, that's a feather in the cap towards the, an indicator that this student is, is likely to succeed. But it's not counting the feathers that the student earns from being in Boy Scouts, for example, or, or, you know, things like that, so.
Right, and I'm not discounting, I'm just saying if the research doesn't do that.
I'm just saying it would be nice if we could, for completeness of our data, we're trying to develop, you know, accurately, or at least as accurately as possible, assess how our students or our individual students are doing and their potential to succeed. We would want to include those things as well, and I don't think that would be hard to do.
It would, we just have to manage like what that is, because we don't know what, what that is, or we rely on the self-reporting piece of it. So I don't disagree, yeah.
But we're not asking, so, so, report to whom?
I'm saying if we make this a criteria to do that, and that was if, if we said that, because I get it.
I'm pointing out, let's not, let's not miss that part.
Yeah, yep, yep, and that's why we're having the discussion, because right now, that's, you know, where the research limit. I'm not saying it has to be limited to that. I think there are some very valuable things that kids do that are outside of the, the school law, so. So I think we need to revisit that so we can take a look at that, maybe be more comprehensive. I'm, I think I've learned that the board may have not looked at the ACT work keys data before. Is that accurate? So the kids take that as part of the ACT? They also take the ACT work keys the next day? There's a whole day for that? Okay. So when the ACT became required for all students, so did the ACT work keys. And so Ryan had put this together last year, this piece of it. It's not all the data, I just wanted to share with you what we have, but it is a different level of question. Employers use this. If you look in that middle section there, it's actually applied math, reading for information and locating information. What is considered, what you need to do on the job. Military, they've taken a look at all of those. It's EEOC compliant, they looked at jobs and what skills are needed to do that. And so the ACT work keys, because the ACT is more of the academic piece of it, they looked at what skills, now how to use that in the workplace. So there's scenario-based things and students get scores. And so if you look below, a student gets a, a certificate, and it's either bronze, silver, gold, or platinum. And based on that rating, is it saying that they hold the skills for whatever certain percentage of jobs that are in this job database that have been evaluated by, you know, across the country. So if you look at our data and the statewide data below on the second page here, you can see across the state, 17%, of students got bronze, 55.5% got silver, 27% got gold, and 0.5% got platinum. And at Whitnell, you can see where our percentages are. So I do think that this could be a career readiness indicator, because if we're talking about taking that, how do you read for information? Can you read a job description manual? Do you know how to read how-to manuals on your job? This takes it to that next level. How do you locate information? If you have to drive to a job site and you don't know how to read a map or even figure out where you're, I mean, those are real skills, right? So I think that this provides a different element to it. We're still gathering our 2017 data and 2015 data to look historically how we've been doing on this. But my personal bias is I think anything less than gold shouldn't, I mean, in terms of where our district is looking at. I think considering where our baseline data is, if we want our kids to be as prepared as possible for it, I would. I think considering where our baseline data is, if we want our kids to be as prepared as possible for it, I would say to look at gold and above. I may have high expectations, but.
After reading a map.
Yes.
Do our kids even know they exist?
Google Maps.
Yeah, on, on the, on the iPhone.
Tells me, tells me.
A regular map would give you.
My wife should be going.
All maps are about this big.
I was doing something, she'd be in the passenger seat saying.
So, we're gonna, any thoughts on this? Because the goal is to come up with a menu of career readiness thing, that students can say, "I have one or two or three of these indicators," as we move forward. Last data piece there is our post-secondary data. And again, I'm not sure, you're going to have to tell me like, "Hey, we looked at this, we know this data," or if this is like, "This is the first time we've seen it," that's helpful too. So, post-secondary data, um, this is from the National Student Clearinghouse. So, post-secondary institutions report to DPI and they report this out. So it's from the universe, the institutions themselves. The second page talks about students' self-reported data. That's a very different piece than coming directly from the post-secondary institutions. What's interesting to note, so if you look at the Whitnell data for five years, look at the multiple column, for example. You notice that in two thousand eleven, twelve, you have twenty-one point nine percent that fall under multiple, right? But all of a sudden, you get to the two thousand fifteen, sixteen graduates, and there's only two point six. The reason is, is that right now, that data will continually change, because those kids are still in school right now. You will see that, you will see those numbers in those last couple lines morph each semester, because I may have been at UW-Whitewater and now I'm at M A T C, and so they switch categories. Or I got my two-year degree at the Technical College and now I've went to a bachelor's degree. So, the top ones are pretty stable right now, because those kids are, for the most part, four or five years out. But our local data will continually morph on those last lines, because students are still very fluid in what they're doing. The last column is probably the less fluid one, or maybe not, as kids decide not to complete. So you look at the five-year data, how many of our kids are actually going to a four-year, two-year multiple, meaning they have different combinations of things that they're doing, and total? So, in eleven-twelve, we had eighty-three point three percent of our students go on to post-secondary education. Two thousand fifteen, sixteen class, we're at seventy-five point five percent of our students that are in a post-secondary institute right now. Does that make sense? Okay. You can see the statewide data and how Whitnell compares to that. I didn't do numbers, because there were thousands, obviously, it's the whole state, so the numbers were really irrelevant. You can see the statewide trend also for students in terms of completers, there seem to be fewer. And that could be with the economy and the job market, if it's easier to get a job now, then at some time, you can see how that fluctuates, who goes on to school or who doesn't, if there's jobs waiting for you. I think the most interesting part of this is on the second page. This is the self-reported data. When we, when your child graduates in their senior year, and we ask them, "What are you doing next year?" The end of May, and they tell us what they're doing. So I thought, so I just grabbed eleven-twelve and fifteen-sixteen. So in eleven-twelve, sixty-eight point five percent of our graduates that year said they were going on to a four-year college. And if you go back up here to look, forty-eight point four of them actually did. So there's the self-reporting data that our students tell us they're doing, and then there's the information we actually get from the post-secondary institutions about, did they actually show up in their buildings? And complete, so every semester, DPI changes this data at the end of the fall semester and spring semester.
Which, uh, which universities or colleges, are we talking just Wisconsin ones, are you talking about?
It's National Student Clearinghouse, yeah. So it's not perfect, there might be some unique ones, but it's private, public, and across the country.
Well, no, I'm just curious if it was all Wisconsin, you have a proportion number of people going to Illinois or North Carolina.
No, it's, it's a national piece of it, so, yeah.
So while there is going to be a variance, not going to be thirty percent.
Right. So I think it's interesting to look at that, and it goes to that whole conversation when your parents are saying, "What is, what is your kid doing next year?" Well, they're going to UW-Madison, right? Well, maybe not. And I say it's important, because we're all trying to live up to that stereotype. And, but if we're, end of the day, if we're preparing sixty-eight point five percent of our kids to go on to a four-year university, but forty-eight point four percent of them are actually doing it, that's a gap in what we're preparing them to do, right? That's why it's important data for us to look at. So I don't know if you typically looked at this or what you have, you're just going to have to tell me if I'm eating stuff that you've looked at.
There's so many variables in there though, so many kids may have intended to, but there might be some financial restriction that they, they couldn't. So I'm going to have to work for a year before I can start that, or I have to go somewhere, "I want to go to this school and I got to establish residency in that state." So there, there may, I mean, there's, that's just one example, there could be a bunch of, there's a lot of variables involved there.
There is, the thing is, is it's the first week in June when we're giving it to them, and college starts like a couple months later. So it's not like we're asking them at the beginning of their freshman year, so it, it is probably as close as we can get.
By then, they would already, you would think, have been accepted and.
And have, you've gone to the orientation sometimes.
All but a dorm room.
Yeah. So, you're right, it's not perfect, there are those cases at the last minute, something happens. But twenty, twenty-five percent? Yeah.
If you started a year later, would you still stay in your cohort?
You would still stay in your cohort group, yep, absolutely.
But it would take a year for that number to.
To get reported, and that's why I say it legs a little bit. So the fifteen, sixteen, let's say I didn't do anything, and now, you know, a couple years later, I went back. You would eventually show up, so that total percentage could, that's why it says, you know, it's, but it is what it is for every district and across, so it's, it's comparable that way. But, you're right, you could pick up more kids who haven't gone back to school for a couple years, they worked, and now they're sort of like, "Hey, I want to go back and get a different degree."
So what about kids who go for one year and then they drop out? Are they still listed in the percentage of the four-year college?
So there's a different piece of it in the, in there that talk about who's completed a degree. And that's a separate, that's a separate piece of data, there's a lot of, there's a lot of data. For people who like data, it's fun, but, um, so the questions that I want to ask in terms of what it looks like. So if we look at the indicators up here, attendance, community service, workplace learning, credentials, pathway course, two or more organized co-curricular activities. I've given you a couple examples of two districts and what they do here is, I think this is Racine's. Here are their indicators, that students who have two or more of these benchmarks are considered career-ready. The one below that is New Berlins. This is their report part, that they report out. So we have a couple different ways of going, and I wanted to just feel the board out in terms of what this looks like. We talked about developing some data baselines this year, moving forward, so we have some annual goals to work on, because without knowing what we're moving toward, it makes it very hard for us what we should be targeting. So any thoughts on any of the indicators that are there?
So, these are their expectations, or these are real numbers of what's happening?
So, if you look at, um, this is New Berlins. So in fourteen-fifteen, they had twenty-three percent of their students give the National Career Readiness Certificate, gold or platinum. Notice there's no silver there. In the next year, in fifteen-sixteen, forty-seven percent of their kids did. So they set that as a goal, and obviously, they increased it by twenty percent, they targeted it, right?
Yeah, look at their attendance.
Exactly. So, um, and sixteen-seventeen isn't quite ready yet, because we're all getting the data from it. So this is, so this is their attendance. Notice for the career-related coursework, they either had some high school courses, so a career in technical education course, or they've done a co-op or internship or GPS or whatever it is. So, we're trying to create a dashboard of, of data right here. And, and, and I'm needing some input in terms of, what does that look like? Because we'll start wherever we are this year, and then, in the summer, we'll say, "Okay, our attendance is," or "The number of kids we have in apprenticeships is, we would like to see that increase by five more kids," or "We'd like to see this done." But, we don't have a dashboard, so we're like randomly grabbing stuff right now. So, any thoughts on any criteria that you saw, or additional things that you didn't see that you think could qualify under career readiness?
I think Mike should be able to punch all that into a spreadsheet, and then as you just select different things, and it becomes, it'd be like a filter. It becomes more and more of a filter until you see, you know, as you check this off and check that off, and you see the percentage climb, and then, I don't know.
But you're looking for what we're actually looking at. Why wouldn't we go with what was?
I'm fine with it, I just didn't know if people like, that's what I'm just saying, like, I'm just letting you know what the research is on it. You guys have options to modify it, but.
I like what it is, I like your gold and platinum idea, and silver and bronze stuff.
Right, sure.
Set a percent, like, set a, set a percentage, like, I know they went from twenty-three to forty-seven, they had a target of getting twenty more.
I don't, so I have to go in, you can see what they did. So obviously, their annual goals that they had, there were some clear things that they wanted to do. If it was increase our attendance by a percent, increase the, so this is where you're able to really set some measurements, but we just don't even have baseline data to start from, so, yeah.
But, we would set those, we would go the first year and then.
So at the end of May, what I would give you is, I'd give you what our sixteen-seventeen data was. And you guys would say, "Okay, where, where, where do we want?" So over the summer, next year, we start to say, "If we are going to increase this, this is what it means we have to do." That's where our priorities are.
Where is the background data for each one of these variables correlating to success?
Yep, up at the very top, there's an H-page summary research, and then it takes you to all of it.
Which one is that? That's the second link?
The one, yep, college and career readiness research, yeah.
I think it's still open.
Yeah, I think starting with the, it's a great starting point, see, we're at the end of the school year, then we can reassess.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure this was relatively easy, I mean, again, from what the data is there. So we can tell you what our, uh, we'll look at our co-curricular participation, we'll get percentages there. Right now, you saw some raw data, but we can go and fill in, like you see here, what is our sixteen-seventeen data, and you have an idea.
So you chose Racine to show you one end of it, and Mike to show you the other?
No, I just grabbed a couple districts in terms of those that had, there's well-defined, yeah. I could grab Greendale's too, if you wanted to, they're just getting theirs started right now, they're about six months ahead of where we are in the process. So, I'll share, I'll share with you Greendale's, they just went out there over the summer and did it.
There's stark contrast there.
Well, Racine is actually pretty developed in their career, again, when they look at the number of students that go on into four-year versus workplace, they've actually started down this journey, they're farther along, because they have a couple years of data with this.
But I didn't see any data with it.
Yeah, I can give you the report card, I was just, I was showing you variations on how different districts did it. No, they have data, it's not where New Berlins is, I'll tell you that.
Different demographic.
I think it'd be interesting to throw some financial data into this as well.
Oh, yeah.
And if you're, so, for example, just for example, if you are increasing co-curriculars, what does that mean for the co-curricular budget? Is it, is it moving in that same direction as well? If that becomes a, hey, they want to get kids in these clubs, that means we need to move more dollars this way, for example. Attendance, look at our food supply, because we're giving candy on Friday to get attendance up, you know, whatever.
Sounds like a, I'm just, I'm just going to agree with that.
I think there's got to be a way to also.
You should be offering candy out of your office.
No candy from, we tell our kids to take candy from screen.
That's why they have to get paychecks on Friday.
Yeah, right. That's right, that's right. I, I think there's, I think there is a way to weave some financial aspect into this as well, and I think it could be exciting.
Yeah, I mean, we already see, oh, how the amount of money you spend per student doesn't, doesn't correlate to high numbers of success down the road.
How are you spending it?
Exactly.
So if these become our priorities, then our decisions and our, but, all of that need to align with our priorities, our decision-making, our time, our efforts, all of that stuff. So, and right now, we just are missing that piece, so I think that's where we're going. So, we'll come back and report it, but that was the first conversation. I can tell you the academic readiness is going to probably be a two-session thing, because there's a lot of data. And, some of it, I think we're going to have to seriously look at, because it's not all there. If we start to dig at that data, we're going to have to be realistic in some of our student achievement data right now, so, to be continued.
Thank you. All right, so on to five, discussion feature action items, five A is contract with Bray Architects.
Uh, so, I don't know if you have any questions, but we, we have not signed anything with Bray Architects. And so they've kind of, at this point in the game, if you all recall, we, we met with them, boy, I think almost a year ago now, around this time. And, uh, they, they laid out their financials and, and, and just looking at them compared to the other firms who went with Bray. And, uh, those financials are, are here in the summary. But, in essence, they are getting to the end of Phase One, which was that study that they performed for us. It was originally just Hales Corners in the pool, they expanded that out, and that hasn't changed any of the financials, which I was grateful to hear. But at this point, they are saying, "Okay, now that we're finishing up Phase One, Phase Two involves actually the referendum process, which is, A, once the results come in, is coming up with solutions, B, the marketing of that, which I think we, we showed a schedule of, of what that marketing may start to look like to, to the board. And then three, of course, the Phase Three of that is, uh, shooter, when the referendum eventually, hopefully, all those words passes, that they would then, then be the architect to, to implement their solutions. I don't think it makes a lot of sense to not move ahead with, with Bray Architects at this point in the game, and that is, you know, I think we kind of understood that as we chose them. But, there is no contract in place for Phase Two and Phase Three, and we would need to bring that to the board to have it. And so what this right now is, is going, is there any opposition, I suppose, to, to bringing up, to, to bringing forward a contract to the board based on that fee proposal? I would certainly sit down with Matt Wolford and Mike Hacker and go through that with them, but they have not even prepared that yet. But I wanted to get it out here to really get a sense of, are we good with Bray, I'm good with Bray?
Did they do the Act Thirty-two stuff as well, is that right, no?
No.
Well, I'm, uh, I'm all for Phase One and Two, but I don't think we should give them Phase Three quite yet. I think that we need to, uh, I don't even know, are they competitive prices? I mean, that, that's a lot of juice, five percent is a million dollars on a twenty-thousand, twenty-million-dollar job if you go all the way up to the top. And if we're at fifteen or twenty-five, or wherever we're getting, if we do pass it. So, uh, I think that we need to, uh, this is their numbers. When you write a contract, you write it for your best. You don't write it for anybody else's best interest, you write it for your best interest. It's common business practice. So, we as a consumer need to look at this contract and say, "Is this the best for Whitnell School District?" And I don't think it is, because I think that we need to, while I'm very comfortable with who they are and what they've done, we need to find out, is this competitive pricing? Is there someone else out there that could, uh, make them move off these numbers? My opinion.
Quinn, I can't recall at our, at, uh, did, did we see other propo, other percentages? I don't know if anyone else, did we see any percentages?
There was, there was four proposals, one was the, uh, the design build, and that was upfront money. The other two were, um, the other two were, were there.
I don't know if they had this, this fee structure.
But they, but they are, they weren't exactly apples to apples close, the other two, Epstein and Basalalatosa. I don't remember the name, Zimmerman, Zimmerman. I'm correct. So, that's my opinion. I go back to saying that when you write a contract, you write it for your interests. And this might be good for Whitnell, I don't know. But, has it been thoroughly vetted? I don't know. Has it been competitively bid? I don't think so.
I agree with Quinn, because how can we competitively bid something out, where, which involves and implies competition, right? For the lowest fee structure and that kind of stuff, for the best job, for the most bang for the buck for the district. How can we do that if we don't know what the project is yet? So, I think it's way premature to, to agree to any kind of fee structure on a, on a successful referendum project.
On Phase Three.
Yeah. Well, isn't Phase Three, like, referendum passes and we do something, spend a lot of money, yeah.
So do they need that in order to move forward? I'm sure they would want it.
Well, well, of course they want it. I mean, Phase Two, they need, they need.
That I get, that I get.
That's the marketing of everything.
We're entering into that.
And solutions, right? I mean, they're, we're facing, anything that comes forward in the survey, we're an architect to say, here's what it would then look like.
Well, I mean, I've, I've expressed my discontent with how that has gone to begin with, with, uh, what we were looking for the district to do, and the process that they took it through has ended up in, you know, forty-four and a half million dollars plus. with, uh, what we were looking for the district to do, and the process that they took it through has ended up in, you know, forty-four and a half million dollars plus, a seven-point-eight million dollar pool with potentially biased wording. So I'm not exactly thrilled with all of that, because it's way beyond what we felt we needed to go to the taxpayers to ask for. So in that sense, I'm not content with what Bray has done. On the other hand, uh, I don't see any reason at this point to not necessarily go on with phase two with them. But phase three, I think is out of the question, because we don't, why would we agree to a fee structure when we've got no, we don't know what we're gonna do, and, and we really should look at competing bids, if we get the opportunity to do something.
Um, I would just say be careful with saying "we," um, if you mean the district as a whole, the board as a whole, or you and your opinion.
Give me my opinion.
So instead of saying "we," just, just saying that that's your opinion on your view with that, not
Well, I know, okay, I don't think
I think we asked them to do this investigative study for us, and that's what they came up with, so that, that part I don't agree with you, John.
And that's what I'm saying, no, no, no.
Yeah, I was gonna say, they did not go out on their own, I wanna be very clear, that was an ask from the district.
I did say, I did say that I'm not happy with that, and therefore, I did say I'm not happy with it. I didn't say we weren't happy with it. I'm not happy with it, and I have expressed that in the past. But I do appreciate your point. But I did say I'm not happy with it, not, we are not happy with it. I said that I feel that they have gone beyond what I thought, that, what I thought that we were after, I did say we there, what we were after when we started this process, okay? But as a board, we allowed them to go that direction, but I
We asked them to, yep.
Yes, but I was not, and am not, happy with it because of where it might end up, where we end, and the questions we end up asking the taxpayers.
Okay.
So, uh, bottom line, though, is I couldn't agree more with Quinn about, uh, because logically, we don't know what, if anything, we get to do. So why would we sign on with them to do it when we don't get the opportunity to look for competing bids?
Okay, so are we okay with doing phase two now, and then?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, it's gonna be a conversation with Bray. I mean, I mean, I, I, we, again, we haven't signed anything for them to necessarily do this part of the phase either. I, I mean, they, they may come, I, I don't think this would be the case, but they may come back and say, if we're not gonna be the architect of choice, then, then go find somebody else to put in another six months of time while you
So do you, okay.
go through the process. I, I, I'm just, I'm just playing the other side of it, cause, cause there, there's nothing in writing on our end, there's nothing in writing on their end.
And we have, they have a new voice enough.
Zero, zero is in writing.
Well, I think that's a mistake on their part, however, if, if that's your business prac, practice, then that's your business practice.
And you asked them that flat out.
So, if I recall, the thirty-four thousand was at least ten thousand less, if not twenty thousand, less than Epstein, uh, upfront, right, for this, for this mile, right? So I guess in harsh words, they're betting on the come.
Yes, and they absolutely, that is their mind.
The other part of it, as Mike just said, is the original RFP was only, was, we expanded the scope of their work. It originally was just HCE and a little part of the high school. They have not add, I mean, so you're right in terms of, we expanded the, the scope of it, they did not change. I mean, so that's a lot of more engineering time and putting together that document on tops of it. And you're right, part of it's a relationship thing, part of it's developing that and working with almost a year in terms of going the organization inside out. I get it, um,
But I'm also now getting bad visions of money with Epstein and twenty thousand dollars that was hanging out there, where I think that we need to pay him the thirty-four thousand. We, we, I don't think we should have moved forward without a contract in place that stated exactly what they're doing, that they're doing war, and they're not billing for that, that's their deal. But don't come back to us, I'm not sure they're not asking for that. But I don't wanna get in a place where we are, where, where we were with Epstein. However, that all transpired, I don't know, but, so
I don't think we are. I think that other thing was contingent upon
Uh, you see, I don't, I don't, I, I get it, but here, the, um, I think we need to pay as we go, and we need to pay them. They've done the work, I, I don't think that's what the question is. But we need to pay them, because we don't need to owe anybody, and, 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 uh, yeah, I'm getting a little uncomfortable, more than talking, so I think I need to shut up.
So here, so if our main concern is whether or not this percentage is in line with what other companies offer, we just do some research to find out what the ranges are from some other companies in the area, to see if this is in line? Would that, would that be a lot of work to do?
No.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
To see where they are? If they end up being in line with everything else? I mean, it's not as agreed, is it? Our concern now is where do they fall?
Well, I think we should go back to those four proposals we had, let's make a, that's a simple search that we can find.
What I'm saying, why don't we answer that question if these are in line, before we start jumping to conclusions?
And I guess, do we make a, do we make a motion to pay him for phase one and proceed with phase two?
Next time, I think.
It'll be next.
Future action item.
So
That's what I'm comfortable with.
So maybe we can get the, those, the additional information?
I have the tables pulled up, if you want to.
Coming for, yeah. Next, we
Is there anything on it as far as fee proposals from the other architects? Not, not the initial layout, cause we, we chose Bray, and that they were less on the initial layout than the others. But do they have the fee proposal, should a referendum pass?
Should a referendum, I see, uh, uh, let's see, yes, uh, only one of them did, and that was Zimmerman, and they said five percent. Uh, the other two said, uh, which is Epstein and Hoffman, uh, said not asked for and not provided. Let me check the other table, cause they might have updated that. Uh, I think I might have updated that.
So five percent is right on with the data?
There's, there's other things that concern me as well, other than just the obvious that Quinn said. They've done some good things thus far, and I think there's a number of other things they could have done better. I don't think it's been entirely perfect thus far.
What are some of those things, Kevin?
Well, frankly, some of the meetings, I think they've come to a little underprepared, and what they've given us hasn't been exactly what I've been expecting. There's one meeting where we didn't really do anything, I don't remember exactly the contact, I mean, some things like that are just kinda bugging me, where we're coming in this, and it's almost like I'm either blindsided, or I'm coming in with this expectation and I'm underwhelmed. But there's been other good things, I mean, they put together the extensive review of everything, sure, but, like you said, I think it comes, like Quinn's been saying, it comes down to the price.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Mike?
No.
Okay, so we'll get those comparison, uh, figures, we'll get it, and then we'll come back in two weeks for us to vote. And, uh, we'll actually have more discussion based on those numbers, okay?
Good.
Um, one question, since I have this up now, uh, Mike and Quinn, would you like me to send it to you, or send it to Mike? And Mike, send it to whoever wants it, ask for it, or do you guys, do you on search, or what?
Yeah, I just shared it again.
Okay. Alright, uh, B is tax levy?
Yeah, this is just more informational, I, I, there, there's not a lot, there, there's still another week to go before we get, um, some, some other variables in place. I did wanna get out there, though, that our membership did increase, what I would say is pretty dramatically, um, from a membership of twenty-seventy-four last September to twenty-one-twenty-four, um, this September. So an increase of fifty resident members, um, which certainly increases your revenue, um, limit this, this, um, this year. It also has the effect in a year from now of bringing in a lot more state aid, like you saw in sixteen, seventeen. So we're kinda doing a, we're on a yo-yo path with our state aid, as far as what that means, and that doesn't bring a lot of stability. But the good news is, while you're, you're gonna get some additional revenue this year with the revenue limit increasing, and where, where that may play into the tax levy, the following year, you're gonna get much more state aid from that. And so, just so we're kind of aware of how that all is kind of falling into place. But, uh, in a week from now, we'll have the, the state aid number, and then at the twenty-third, we'll pull it all together and, and approve a, a tax levy based on whatever that state aid number is.
So the twenty-one-twenty is resident?
Yeah, yeah.
What's total?
Total is over, it was twenty-five thirty-nine, twenty-five thirty-seven, something in that range.
A crazy, fifty students in one year, new students who
Yeah, we had an increase.
The house is going up like crazy.
At all different levels, I take it?
Yeah, it's not, it's not like all kindergarten, I mean, like, fifteen new students who live in our district in one year. That's, that's a really crazy number, when you look at, from Realtors and that, I mean, that's just for one year.
Yeah, yeah, we did not, did not see that increase, so.
Alright, and then, uh, short-term cash flow borrowing?
Yep, so again, um, and this could almost be, I think it has actually been a consent agenda item every year, um, that, that we will need to borrow again. I, I, I don't remember anything from last October, to be quite frankly with you, to be frank. Um, but I, I can't remember if there's something from associated that, that the board actually needs to approve from a resolution standpoint, or if it's simply, there was something, some sort of
There's always something wrong in the anti-catchers.
It's a line of credit documents.
It's a line of credit documents.
There's always something wrong, a wording on there wrong that you cre, that you find.
Probably should have been a crew reader or something.
There you go.
No, it's, it's, yeah.
So, so I, I hope that we can get something from, usually by the end of November, we're looking at low cash flow, um, before the state aid comes in right at the beginning of December. And then we draw that down real quick with our first payroll in December, and then we're borrowing by the end of December again through mid-January. Makes sense to take out a line of credit, that seems to be the, the way most districts are going. Uh, but just wanted to be aware, last year, we were around three and a quarter million is what we ended up having a line of credit for. Um, we'd probably do something similar to that again, although I don't think we ever went above, I'd have to double-check, two-point-four, two-point-five million borrowed last year, at a cost of just a little over twenty-three hundred, so.
So there's a different option? You said this is the way most districts are going, so what?
Yeah, there is a different option. The other option is that you can borrow the money for the entire year, and that you don't pay it back until June thirtieth. That was a big thing that districts used to do when interest rates were really high. You would borrow the money, not just for the short-term piece, but that you would take the entire year, even if you didn't need the cash, reinvest it in a savings vehicle, that can get you higher interest than what you were borrowing it at, and end up making money off of it. So that's gone away, though, with low interest rates, and you can't play that game anymore. So I never got to play it as a dismanager, but it sounded fun, but
Well, unless you get in a situation like someone
Unless you get it, unless you take that money and then you plow it into something, that's a little risky. I'd just like to say, I'd put it in a savings account, but, but, uh,
Yeah, makes you know what we're looking for. Where's Mike?
Yeah, right, yeah.
And on this topic, so, as we were preparing for the annual meeting, and obviously now debriefing from it, there's a thought of, in some cases, you can actually add this borrowing onto the annual meeting, or the
Yeah, I think we double-checked legislation, I don't know if you can or cannot, we'd have to double-check into it. But I think it would make a lot of sense if we could do it at the annual meeting, to just say, is the district cash flow borrow? And then can we have those documents at that time, be ready to go, since it is a commonality for this district? To, to, to simply short-term borrow, we could do it that way. But it's also, if you just wanna break it out and have it be separate, we can do that too. I, I do know that it's always been on the consent agenda, though, because you, you could vote no, and then we wouldn't do payroll. But you, you could vote, you know, so it's always just been consent agenda.
Any other questions on that? Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Take it in.
Hi.
Hi.
Let the ink dry a little bit, huh?
Was it the peanut bladder working here, Chris, or what, you're like